March 2nd, the time is now 6:33 PM. And I'd like to call our first in-person school committee meeting since, well, as this iteration of school committee meeting are first to order. First up on our agenda is the consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look over the warrants? Our meetings, our minutes from the last meeting will be in our folder for next time. Any questions or comments? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to consent, to, oh my gosh, maybe not. I'll make a motion to consent agenda.
Okay. All right. Any other last, any questions or anything? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, that's approved unanimously. Next is our student report. I don't know if Marcus is on. I see those 26 people, but I don't know who else might be.
It's in alphabetical order, so the M's are right at the bottom. We'd have to scroll up a little bit more to see.
No, we'll give them, Marcus, are you, if you're there, could you raise your hand? Your little zoom hand? I don't see him. Okay. So I'm gonna say we'll push that to, it's standing anyway, so we'll move on that one for next time. Item number three is continuing business. So we're gonna talk about the reopening plan some more and safety committee update. And so one of the things that I just kind of want to make sure we talk about and bring it out, so it's not like an elephant in the room, is that, yes, we are aware that there has been all sorts of things happening, flurry of activity from Commissioner O'Reilly, from Governor Baker. So as it stands right now, everything that Commissioner O'Reilly mentioned the later part of last week and what Governor Baker has talked about right now, these are all suggestions and proposals to propose. There is a Board of Education meeting that's happening on this Friday. Is that correct, Carol?
I believe it's this Friday, yes.
And that's when they will vote to see whether or not they're going to give Commissioner O'Reilly the authority to do what he wants to do. Governor Baker's proposal, as I understand it and interpretively, is riding on the coattails of what Commissioner O'Reilly is pushing forward and that he's standing behind this initiative to get kids back in school full-time. But I would like to remind everyone that we are phasing students in. All of our students will be in granted in a hybrid model by March 22nd, with the exception of those students that have chosen to remain remote. Is that, is that correct as I'm stating that, Carol?
Yes.
Okay. So I feel pretty good about that. I just want to say that I know that maybe it's not happening fast enough for some people, but for as many people that want to push in, I can probably find as many people that are reluctant to move forward, that are, you know, that there are still families in our district that are choosing to leave their kids remote. So there's not a one-size-fits-all proposal or a one-size-fits-all solution. And as I've, you know, I'm really getting long of the tooth as chair here. This is what my fourth meeting. I'm realizing that it doesn't matter what I say or do, or what we say or do. We're not going to make everyone happy. And I'm trying to be comfortable in my own skin regarding that. So as I'm sitting here with my fellow ladies, I just want to say I appreciate you guys because this has been a lot more than I would have ever thought it was. And this is just a shout out to Emery because lord knows, he dealt with this from, you know, last March throughout. And just in this little tidbit, the amount of work and time and energy that, you know, reading through emails, trying to answer emails, just trying to digest the information. There's a lot of it that's out there. So I'll get off my soapbox and say, Carol, take it away for the reopening plan and where we're at.
So we are on track for Monday for our ninth and 10th grade and our third and fourth grade. To start, we had a good first week last week with the kids in both schools. Lot of smiles, lot of happy kids to be back. It was great having the building, making noise, people in the halls. So it was, it was a good, good first week there.
Do we have any reports or anything like what teachers were saying? How was staff with more people? How were the teachers feeling?
I think you, there's, you've got Stephen and Bill on as panelists. We can, you know, get it straight from them.
Do we have any teachers that are on? I would love to hear from the administration, but I'd also like to hear from a couple of our teachers that came back into the building. Robin's probably been in.
No, not Robin. I can't see them from here, so I can't tell you who has.
See, I don't think maybe calling them out, maybe if they would like to offer.
Yeah, if they, if anyone has anything that they'd like to say, if you could raise your hand. I just kind of want to hear from people. Temperature check, just to see what we thought, having people back. And Nancy, I see her name up on the screen. I'm wondering how you thought it was, if you don't mind me putting you on the spot, having more people back in the building and if it went okay, but having the second grade cohort, which we were worried about, coming back.
That's you sent two places.
She's on two meetings.
Oh, that's right, I forgot she's in two meetings. Okay, we'll save that later. Is there a safety committee update at all?
So the safety committee update is, we actually had a good conversation regarding notifying the community about positive cases within the school community. And after, you know, a well-thought-out conversation, we decided that I would do it once a week. You know, and do from Wednesday to Wednesday. And that a daily COVID report would be on the website. And in my once-a-week notification, it will always include the link to the website daily. So if people want to know daily, there's a place to go. We thought, we got some reports that it was anxiety inducing by hearing it every day, getting notified that there was a case. So for some people, they want to know that, and for others, once a week is plenty. So we're gonna do that moving forward.
So I did have some conversations with Cheryl today, and she's unable to make it. She had a conflicting meeting, but she did send us all an email, and I have her permission to read this part into record. So I do just want to say that because it's part of the reopening plan and it kind of fits into the next part of a visitor's comment as well. So Cheryl, the net, the president of the GEA says, "Most all of the staff are very eager to return to in-person learning. For many of us, there is a beginning-of-the-year anticipation while we ready our classrooms for the students' return. We know that many steps have been taken to ensure everyone's health and safety. Our hope is with the proper protocols being not only in place, but followed by all, we will have a positive experience returning to in-person. There is a high level of disappointment that all school staff was not prioritized for the vaccines. However, we are ready and excited to be in person with our students. Granby's teachers, nurses, and paraprofessionals have always been dedicated educators, and we will continue to give it our all. We have always wanted what is best for the students in our community. Sincerely, Cheryl." So I, I am relieved and happy and elated to have that feedback from the teachers. I feel like, you know, we've been working with the union. We've been working hard with the union, and I think we're getting to a better place of collaboration. And not that we weren't ever collaborating, I want to make that perfectly clear. This is not a knock on anybody, but I feel like we're just, everyone's really trying to be in it together. So I really appreciate that, and I appreciate her comments. Okay. Anybody have anything else for safety committee update or reopening plan questions?
Question in general. So, you know, if, if there is support for the commissioner and governor's plan to kind of move forward, you know, Carol, is that something you're gonna kind of look at with your leadership team in terms of, you know, what that might change per the recommendations and guidance?
Well, I think it's not, not so much just us looking at it. It's the school committee and us working with the GEA.
And the BOH too, right? And the Board of Health also to make sure.
You know, so there's, there's a few things that we have to do, you know, to make sure that we're doing it safely.
So with that, let's just kind of play it out a little bit. So there's this meeting on Friday, Riley gets the vote. Should we be scheduling a joint meeting with a BO, with BOH and with the appropriate? Because it's not truly a negotiation. It's going to be a plan that's being, as I'm understanding it, it's a plan that's be like an edict from on high, this is what you need to do. So there's not really room to negotiate, right? We just have to figure out how to make this plan work.
You have to negotiate the impact.
Okay, we have to negotiate the impact. But in order to make a plan, I feel like we need to have the key stakeholders. I would love to say in a room, but I'm not sure if that's necessarily possible, but on a Zoom, just to try to make those things happen. So when do we, would we preliminarily schedule that now for sometime next week? Or wait and see how the vote goes? Or what do you think?
Well, until, until he gets the authority, I think, you know, I mean, we certainly can schedule, you know, a meeting, say on Monday, and find out the availability of the Board of Health.
Okay.
After, I mean, his, his Board of, Board of Education is usually during the day. So we should know, you know, 11, 12 o'clock, I would think, if the decision is made.
I have a question. Does weekend be date?
What's, the date that's being thrown around is April 5th.
April, April 5th? I thought it was April 1st.
No, because it's the first Monday, I think.
Okay.
It's April 5th.
Because April 1st is weekend. Oh, right, okay. So that's the first Monday of the month. So that's the first Monday. So one good thing that we have sort of going in our favor is that we have worked to the point where, like I said earlier, all of our students will be in the building as of March 22nd. And our numbers are trending in the right direction, so there will be no need to pull that back. So really what we have to, to work on is how to bump up that amount of time and, and also find out like all of the little nuances of this proposal. Because one of the articles that I read, I read the comments too, so I, sometimes I get myself confused, but was that they want hybrid to be off the table, but so many schools had like this going to a four-day hybrid with Wednesday as a deep clean day. And so they weren't 100% sure if it would be a full five days or if it would be like a four-day kind of.
Depending on hours, that's what it boils down to. They have to have so many in-person, it's the same thing. We had to change the block scheduling at the high school, it's amount of hours. So unless they want to go to school on Saturdays and the weekends, or all summer long, we'll end up having to change it.
We have to change it.
If he changes it.
And then the other thing we'd have to work on is the spacing, right?
Yeah, that's correct. My other, because if they're getting away from the hybrid or about, my understanding was it was those schools that could. Because if there's not enough spacing in between, you can't have everyone in the building.
So that's sort of where the crux of it all lays is, again, I am not super well-versed on this. This is like my reading and understanding. So I'm looking at you Jill, because I know in your day job life.
I think, I think it just goes back into kind of figuring out where that balance lies and where Desi's interpretation versus the CDC's interpretation and, you know, kind of where the, the strike of that is for us and meeting the time on learning requirements and all of it. Because when I listened to it and read the material, Commissioner O'Reilly had made a statement about how Desi's interpretation of the, the social distancing was never six feet, it was 3 to 6 feet. And that was always where Desi had stood, and some schools were, you know, using that and being fine with three feet. You know, and I think that's not necessarily where we stand or have to stand, but it's, it's tough. So I think depending on where we end up with what he's given the authority to do with Governor Baker's approval, and then where we get with working collaboratively with everybody. I think that's where, you know, I just wanted to kind of have like a little bit of an open discussion though, and kind of be thinking about all of these things. Because if we have to meet certain requirements, how we get there is going to be very important.
So talk to me, or someone explain to me better. I understand hours of instruction as it applies to what, so this is from a line in the sand from this April 5th date going forward, right? Because what we've been doing up until this point has been meeting what was expected at this point. Is that not correct?
Correct. It was what was counted to be allowed to do it. So that's why they adjusted the hours at one other point of how much live instruction versus, you know, asynchronous versus asynchronous.
Right.
Now he's taking that completely off the table.
So how may that impact those students though? Because it's like saying one thing, as, you know, you listen to them and it says one thing, but then all students that need to or choose to stay home remote are still going to be okay. So how, how do we play that out? So we have these.
So we're going, yeah, we're, we're going to have to have remote teachers as well as in-person teachers.
And those remote teachers would be remote from the building or remote from their home?
Live teaching all day.
Live teaching all day, so.
Wherever they are.
Semantics, but yeah, they'll be live all day.
And now will specials have to be live now as well?
Well, specials are live for the kids that are in the building, you know, so they go to specials.
But, so we have specials right now in the elementary school. There's a special that's every day, but the kids are only in the building two days a week. So there's specials three days a week that are not live for some of the kids.
Right.
So what I'm asking.
If all of the kids return in April, then they'll, they'll be doing probably asynchronous for the students at home and live for the students that are in here.
And then, so what about half-days? So half-days, not early release days, but half-days, you know, I know that there's like this fine line of time. Half-days count as hours of instruction. Can they, can you, could we do like four full days and a half day? So that, you know, if we wanted to have the deep clean sort of thing on a Wednesday in the afternoon? Or is that, does that negate it all?
We add up all the hours.
So, but there would still be hours on a Wednesday then? Or would it be better if they, you know, like, I'm just trying to think, like, how do you balance it?
Typically, your Wednes, our Wednesdays during COVID became top, you know, half-days.
Well, they're all on this Wednesday now, so it's not really like a full.
No, they are. Just the afternoon is asynchronous. So you're still, you're still instructional time.
Getting instructional time.
Correct.
So if we go five days, you know, to be, that, that's what it will be. It'll be just like we're back in school, but the students that choose to stay remote will have remote instruction.
Okay, kind of a little off-topic, a quick question I had is, what would busing look like if we go back to five days?
So they've already, the busing has already been relaxed. So the, the guidance with the busing now is much more relaxed than what it was before.
Is it, is it three feet? Is it?
No, I believe.
Is it just putting butts in seats?
It's just regular windows.
One student per, at least one student per seat in a big bus. It's different, but there's, every seat would be.
And some windows need to be opened or something, right?
Yeah, windows open for ventilation, but capacity-wise, there's.
So capacity-wise, we're not concerned moving forward that we would have to run multiple bus runs.
Yeah, we're running all our buses.
Yeah, all our buses run anyway.
Yeah, we've been running every bus.
Right, but my, my understanding is we're running them right now, but they're drastically reduced in how many students are on the bus. If we go back to in-person, are we going to be able to still accommodate just running the six buses that we have?
Well, I think what you, I think, I think what they're saying is that we've already gone back.
We don't have anymore, but like, all the buses we would need, we have already, so.
There's no, there's no more compressed routes or different routes because that, that number, the spacing has already gone away.
Right, but, okay.
And the, and the requirements have, are, that relaxed prior to this being on the.
Alright, so that's one thing we don't need to worry about.
Yeah, so busing is no longer a concern.
A concern.
And so that busing would also parlay into sports, right? So if we needed bus transportation for sports when we have games, we're good with that piece of it, right? Because that's still a part of the same shebang, right?
I would assume so. I mean, Ally would probably be able to speak.
Right, we'll ask her.
But I would assume so, yes. Based on the, you know, reduced regulations for busing in general, I would say yes. But Ally certainly could probably speak more to that.
Okay, I'm just gonna say this, it's on the top of my head. We're just talking about it, the buses. So if they've been more relaxed in that manner and kids can be within three feet there, do you think they're gonna be more relaxed on their avenues? Like, I have a hard time trying, like, thinking that we have to be, you know, really strict with these areas. But on the bus, it's like a, it just seems so counter. I, so if the bus, like, the kids can be within, you know, they're gonna be within three feet on the bus, but then when they come in the building, we're separating them by this potential three to six feet. I was wondering if they're being more relaxed on the bus? Do we think that's gonna follow suit in the classrooms?
Well, that's what.
That's what should be determined, yeah.
The CDC keeps saying six, but there are doctor, every day another doctor signs on. You know, there's a, there's a document that the Department of Education has been sharing. They're, they're saying that three feet is, you know, suffices in elementary.
Right, because I was, I guess what I'm trying to say is then, right, three feet. With, when you're sitting on the bus, they're going to be closer than three feet with other students.
They're one in a seat, not.
Well, my understanding is that the restrictions are more relaxed for elementary students on the bus.
So I'm just bringing it up right now.
Than it is for.
So the new, the new guidance is that for elementary schools, capacity limitations and physical distancing on buses are lifted. So there are, you can, riding a bus is the same as pre-pandemic, based on the new regulations.
Except they have to wear masks.
Wear masks, windows.
Correct, but capacity, gotcha.
Capacity-wise, you can have two kids or three kids if needed in every seat on the bus.
That's done for, when did that go into? It's been a while.
This has been, yeah, a couple of weeks.
Yeah, a couple, yeah, not a while, but yeah, a couple of weeks probably.
That's a while.
That's a while.
It's like super old news.
Actually, February 11th, so yeah, so three weeks.
Yeah, and then another part of this, Riley's statement, is this was also really concerning K to six. So also I just wanted to kind of discuss seven to 12.
Well, I had, before you go there, it was K to five. So my question is, because this building is K to six, would that automatically start to link in sixth grade?
It would have to.
Okay, so I just wanted to.
Right, so K to five, because they're probably thinking traditional middle schools.
Yeah, right. I think we're gonna swallow it as our, our middle, our, you know, pre, pre-K to middle school is pre-K to six. So we're making that, we've already made that determination as far as anybody else would see. We don't have a, a middle school. You know, we've got the junior, senior high school, so the seventh and eighth graders get lumped in for high school stuff. So, because we can't really segregate the seventh and eighth graders. So that's how I would think we would have to handle it. But I guess I don't know the specifics on how, or just, I just wanted, just to clarify, in terms of building-wise, that, that would be the thought, right?
Yeah, well, this is, it's considered elementary.
So we have to wait and see what happens at the vote on Friday. Do, do you think we will need to have to have a special meeting to address this if it goes through? Because we're not gonna have a ton of time. I gotta look at the calendar, but I'm not sure if, will we have enough time to be able to make it happen? You know?
So I guess, are we doing then, it would be a posted meeting with all of us in it?
So we have the 16th and the 30th. So they're, what's today, today's the second? So I guess we have two meetings. I just don't know if we feel like, would that be enough time to be able to make the necessary adjustments? Or do we, do we try to add one in maybe on the, on the 23rd or something? Just to try to get.
But having that was tentative there in case we need it.
Right.
I don't think we have a meeting on the 30th, right? Because we have, there's three Tuesdays this month, so I don't think we have it on the 30th.
Oh, that'd be wonderful, because I said the 30th is probably.
We do not, yeah. I, I have, oh.
Seth, I almost wrote you an email to be like, can you switch?
I'm sorry, I have, I, yeah, I stand corrected. So I have the second and the 16th.
Correct.
Right. And then, so, right, so our next meeting is the 16th?
Which is, I think, yeah, plenty of.
Plenty of time?
Yeah.
We have enough time that if we decide to, we can do it over email and make a decision to post it, right? Because I, I don't know that it necessarily has to be, I think it will have to be posted, but I don't know if it's just gonna be a school committee meeting or if there's gonna be executive session meetings or all sorts of other meetings that need to happen. But I think we've got a lot of work ahead of us if this goes through.
Well, so this vote is the fifth.
I believe that's the board, the.
That's the Board of Education meeting, but I don't know.
And it's supposed to go into effect on April 5th.
Yes.
Yeah, so that gives us one month to make everything.
Does it have to go in effect on the 5th? Or I thought that it was beginning the 5th. I thought it, when I read it.
I think it's like a switch flips, like you're supposed to be making major progress.
So the first is for just elementary?
I believe you start with elementary, yes.
So a question on the table here, whether we need to have another meeting set up the week of the 8th? So meeting until the 6th?
Well, I was thinking like the week of the 22nd, so we have more time to plan. So we have, so that, the vote's gonna be on the 5th. We have a meeting on the 16th, so that give us, you know, a good amount of time.
But are you saying you want a meeting with all the stakeholders?
A lot of work to do, what is, what are you?
Well, I'm thinking that it's like making sure that we've, you know, we've got people on board, making sure that we can accommodate this, that we can, you know.
You're gonna need negotiation time.
Well, but don't we also have to still get things through with the, the Board of Health?
Right, but I think that's not gonna, I mean, if it's an idiot.
Baker is above our local Board of Health. So that's where that line also lies, is.
And right now, it's just the elementary, so it would be a little easier because we're, it's the elementary that's being focused on.
Well, for whatever it's worth, I'm just gonna say it. I, I think if we're doing part of it, we're gonna do all of it. You know, I'm not gonna, I, I wanna make, you know, I'd like the district, if we're, if this is coming at us, I don't want just the elementary kids to be coming back.
Well, the reason that they're focusing on elementary is those are the kids less, that they're finding are less susceptible or less likely to pass it on. That's why they're not focusing on the upper grades that are more adult-like bodies more, you know. So that is something I'd be thoughtful of.
Yeah.
We can be thoughtful of it, but I'm saying it here now that I'm, I would like us to try to figure out how to, you know, I don't want to leave the stone unturned, is what I'm saying. I don't know what it leads for us, but we're a small enough district that it's gonna be a massive impact if only half the kids are coming back. Because we're pretty, we're almost like 50/50. So I'm just.
Well, we, we have to wait and find out what ends up being.
Right, what the guidance is.
Right, and then we go from there.
So, I mean, we don't know what we don't know yet. This is a lot of speculation. I'm glad we're having this very open dialogue. I appreciate it, you know, I, I think everyone, everyone appreciates it, you know. I think we need to do that, but I know, I know, I don't know what I don't know. I don't think any of us have any idea what else is coming. I think there's so much that is unknown with this. All we can say is, right, like, we're, obviously we're open to it, we're planning, you know, right now we're having these pre-discussions, but we can't say, yeah, like, we're full, we're going to go full steam ahead because we don't know it yet. But we're obviously having those conversations. So to say that we're open to it, of course, I mean, I can only speak for myself, but we're going to be open to complying to the commissioner's guidance. I think that just needs to be said. It's not like we're gonna be. Right, anything else on this topic? It's really like, I feel like this is the meat of our meeting tonight, but I'm sure there's, we could speak hours and hours and hours about this, but is there anything else? Audrey, you look like you've got something to say.
From my eyes? No, I'm good.
Okay, next up is visitor's comments. And I was told that Christie Burnett has something to say, and she needs to go first.
Before she comes in, can we just be mindful that, to please start by stating your name and your address?
And I'm gonna run my timer for three minutes. Christie, are you there?
Hold on.
Oh, not yet, you're not there.
He waited on her.
Now she is.
Now she's there.
Hello?
Hi.
Oh, okay. Christie Burnett, 80 Pleasant Street in Granby.
Oh, okay, Christie Burnett, eighty Pleasant Street in Granby.
Have a count, Christie.
So, um, I just wanted to say, um, how happy I am with Leland being back and all the good feedback from his teachers, how well he's doing in just this past week. Uh, I'm, I'm so excited for him, and my first grader, Kalia, as well, she's doing great, and Kayden's coming in on Monday, and I feel like everything is finally getting back into place and emotionally, socially, for our kids, it's so important. It's been so emotionally hard on all of them, never mind, you know, you guys, the teachers, but I feel it's so important to get them all back in, and they've missed out so much. And I know it's obviously going by the rules and regulations, but as a mom, I am happy with how it's opening up so far and how well some of my kids are doing. Um, and I just wanted to make a note of that. Hopefully, if there is an option to go fully in school, we can go with that, because these kids need every bit of learning in person that they can get. That's all.
Thank you.
Uh, Heather?
Hi.
Hi.
So I'm Heather Gay, one twenty-five Maximilian Drive, and I just wanted to kind of add my two cents about what, about coming back full-time, um, and if, God forbid, we ever went into the red again, that I don't feel that we should be going back to a remote model. So I'm a fourth grade teacher at a Catholic school in Lovell, and we have made a full return, five full days since September, without any issues at all. Um, and I know a lot of people say, well, you have small class size, but I have nineteen kids in my class every day, and in a building that's a hundred years old, um, and they're six feet apart, and it's definitely not ideal. I've got kids up against closets, I've got a kid whose desk is almost out the door, there is no other furniture in the room besides my desk and theirs, and it's certainly not the ideal classroom. But my kids are learning every day, their social emotional needs are being met, they're, they're going out to recess with each other, they're playing, um, and they're not falling behind, like I saw them fall behind in the spring when we were remote. And what I, what we've learned, and when, when we first went back, we had no idea what was gonna happen either. We were, my, myself, my, our staff, we were nervous. We didn't know if we were gonna be remote in a week and there was gonna be a huge outbreak, there never was. And when Lovell went red, we stayed in. Um, there's twenty-six kids in our second grade, they take up the whole cafeteria because we eat in our rooms. Um, but the mask-wearing and the distancing and the hand washing, and we, we wash their desks before snack and before lunch and at the end of the day, it's all working, this stuff is working.
Why is it so, can you put, I mean, why is it so, can you put her on bed?
You hear me?
I'm sorry, Heather, we got you, uh, cut off about that.
Oh, that's okay, so what I, what I'm just trying to say is, from a teacher's point of view, and I've been doing this since September, five full days, it is working. Um, I did have one of my students test positive, nobody else in my class did. Uh, we haven't, you know, like, I, I don't know if you heard me say Lovell went red, they went remote for months, we never did. Um, it, the transmission's not happening at school. Uh, I think that the kids are actually healthier at school, because we're forcing them to wear masks, we're forcing them to stay six feet apart, we're washing their hands constantly. I mean, I, I clean and I teach, and I clean and I teach, and I clean, I teach all day long. Um, but it is really working, and I, it's hard for me to have my sixth grader and my sophomore haven't been in the building in a year and to go to work every day, and I'm doing it, and it's working, and it's hard for me to see them be home and struggle. Um, it's difficult for me, and so I really would encourage that if we, I don't, and I, I don't think we will, I pray we don't go red again, but if we do, um, we really need to rethink, we're red, oh my gosh, we have to be remote, because.
Heather, I'm sorry to cut you off, I can give you thirty more seconds to.
Okay, so I would agree with what most people are saying. Emotionally, these kids need to be, need to be in school. My sophomore has straight A's, her mental health has suffered big time. Um, so I would really encourage, let's get them back as fast as we can, as much as we can, full-time. I'm excited about Baker's decision. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, uh, Pete?
Hello, can you hear me?
You can.
All right, perfect, so before I get started, I'm not asking for extra time, um, I was gonna utilize three minutes, but I also have some people that wanted to make statements that couldn't be here, that my wife was gonna read. So is she able to just jump on at the end of mine and utilize three minutes that way? Or would you like her to log on to Zoom in another room?
No, I'll allow it, um, but I need you to identify yourself and your address, please.
I, I apologize, uh, Peter White, uh, five Deerbrook Drive.
Excellent, go ahead.
Actually, let's have Melanie read first, how's that?
All right, Mel.
Okay, so this first statement is from.
I need you to identify yourself and your address.
Okay, my name is Melanie White, five Deerbrook Drive.
Okay, and then how many statements do you have?
I have two statements.
Okay, and so, hold on, I'm gonna say, I'm just looking at the community, uh, is it, do, is it three minutes per statement, or?
We, she needs two minutes.
Okay.
And I'll be less than three.
Okay, go ahead, Mel.
Okay, and this is from Jennifer Bullock, she's also Granby resident, not sure exactly her, um, address. Um, she put, "I am increasingly concerned about the academics and overall well-being for the students and their families, the mental and emotional toll on our kids, the various tools on the parents, and the possibility of too many students falling behind in the next school year. I am really hoping that regardless of what the weekly COVID report is, that we can still keep our kids in school. We have the standard safeguarding system against COVID within our schools, and all our kids should be there to benefit from it if they choose. I hope that all families will have the choice to send their kids into school without having to wait for their chance to be phased in. I worry that the current phasing plan is going to hinder the academic and emotional growth for students who have spent little or no time in the schools, and I believe that we need to come up with a new system to prevent any further consequences to them." And that's it.
Next one's Kelly.
The next one is Kelly Seacard, and she states, "If you look at all the statistics of Massachusetts schools from September, the eastern part of the state and the central part of the state all have been back in school in cohorts since September, regardless of the cohort or the color the town or city is in. If an individual tested positive in that school, they would shut the school down for the fourteen days and go remote, not shut the town down, they shut the school down. If you also look statistically, people are getting COVID outside of the school, not inside of the school. The way that Western Mass has handled the reopening of the schools has completely been handled incorrectly. It's not only just Granby that has done this, it's other schools. I do feel Granby could do better going forward and not shutting down if we go in the red. If you, if you would have looked at the way the rest of Massachusetts to the opening with cohorts, regardless of the color, then our kids would have been back in school in September."
That was Kelly Seacard again, this is Peter White, uh, five Deerbrook Drive. Um, I just wanted to start off by saying, I'm very happy to see a kid starting to go back to school. Um, I'm excited to get them all phased in. Uh, I still believe, though, even though they're getting phased in, we need to make sure that they stay in at all costs. Um, we're gonna reiterate that we should be looking at modifying or eliminating this weekly COVID report as a metrics for our kid to be able to attend in person. Um, of course, you guys just talked about the, the announcement from government Baker. Um, there is, uh, I believe, a lot of excitement in the school community. I think we all understand there's a lot that needs to go with it, and there's a lot that is not known. Um, I'm, I, along with everybody else, I'm sure, are very, very excited to hear what the plan of the committee is going forward. Um, I do support full-time, uh, full-time school in person, if that's four days a week with one day off, so be it. Um, but I believe we should still have an option for those that do not feel comfortable and want to utilize a remote system. On the article, um, the article stated they wanted to start with elementary schools. Again, I'm gonna, uh, piggyback, uh, Jen, we're a small school system, I really believe we could, together, have both schools work on this at the same time. Um, the science shows it's safe for our kids to be there. Um, someone mentioned, actually, Jen, you mentioned there's just as many people that want to stay home as those, those that want to go in full-time. Uh, if there's that many people that want to stay home, there should be plenty of room for the rest of us to send our kids full-time in person. I know there's a lot of other things that go with that, and I can appreciate the effort that you guys are putting in with it. All both sides want is the choice to stay home or go remote. Right now, only one side is getting that choice. At the end of the comments last week, uh, I was very disappointed for a, a committee member to say, if people feel like they're not being heard, then why are this only the same two or three people talking at the school committee each week? There is a ton of people, and I'm gonna read it, there's tons of people that feel like they are not being heard, they're not being listened to. And I, I just hope, you know, there's a bunch of people on here that want to speak. A lot of people didn't know that they could speak at the school committee meetings. A lot of people didn't know how to get on to the school committee meetings. I'm sorry?
Thirty seconds.
All right, uh, I just, on, on a close, I just wanna, again, uh, reiterate how disappointing I was. I just received a message from someone that was listening, uh, to the school committee meeting before it started. Um, you guys were unmuted, pretty much the message that I received was, uh, someone walked in and said, hey, guys, just so you know, there's thirty people calling in to complain about our last meeting. Then someone, nope, someone else said, like, I have no problem being a B, I'm running a ninety-minute sleep. That is a, a perfect example of why people do not feel comfortable to call in and feel like they're not being heard. I hope that stays on the YouTube video and everybody can see it, starting at six-twenty and forward. I appreciate the time, thank you.
Okay, uh, Jason?
There. Can you hear me?
You can, please identify yourself and give your address.
I sure will, Jason, twenty-sixth Porter Street, last name Shoutzina, thank you for your time. Appreciate everyone's busy schedules, and I heard in the beginning how busy everyone has been and, and how much extra, I think, is, is an understatement, right? This pandemic has caused you all. I, I have to say directly, though, um, I don't think we're making sound decisions. We keep saying, and I, I heard on this call for the last hour, about the commissioner and the governor and the Board of Health, and we have to wait and see, we have to wait and see. And actually, it's the school committee who gets to make all the choices. And we have only a few groups back to school, and I know we have more cohorts coming, but the pace of the cohorts and the unrelated nature of those state maps to our school community, we are now in the yellow as a town, and we've had more COVID-nineteen emails in the last three weeks than we had when we were in the red from the school community. It just proves to show you that we're not following the science. I think we're following the fear and the fear of liability, which is why I think certain groups have always been back at school. You know, there's liability issues, there're teacher union issues, and there's decision issues. And I, I just wanna say, I think it was reiterated by Pete and some other folks that they read, we, we need the right and the choice to be back to school, and it's actually your choice. No one else is, with recommendations from Board of Health, that you have to listen to or not listen to. So, um, Connecticut, all my in-laws in school a full year, no outbreaks. This is a flu, it is a devastating virus for those who are immunosuppressed and above the age of sixty-five, there's no doubt of that. We've lost family members, one from suicide and one from the virus itself, so nobody's been immune from this. But I do have to say that I, I don't think we should be commending each other at the job we're doing, because we should all be back in school. I think Heather Gay had it right, those Catholic schools, you should look at the other models. I don't know how much time you have to, to dedicate to this job, but we should look at the other models that are already back in school, and we should be working towards that model. I know that's not everyone's opinion, I think there's a right for people to be full-time remote, and there's a right for people to be full-time in school. We, we are getting dealt sort of an in-between, which feels the pinch, and you guys feel the pinch, because nobody's happy, because you have all these subgroups. So I commend you for signing up for your job, I'm sure it's not what you thought it would be, given that it, there probably wasn't a pandemic when you were voted in, although some of you are, are new to the board, and I, I wish you luck, but I, I think at some point, we have to get to a decision and either put it back on the population to vote, the school-community population, or you guys make that decision. Um, March eighth and March twenty-second for two more classes and three more classes just isn't fast enough. And again, two days in school, three days out of school, bring your computer to school, bring your computer home, it, it's not ideal. The social, emotional issues that the families are dealing with, just to, to leave you with this, and I know it'll resonate with the board, two-point-four million women have had to leave the workforce in the last year alone to take care of their kids because of decisions like this, because they can't.
Jason, we have seconds.
Okay, well, you know, there, there's really no other decision other than to enable you guys to, to make the, the next step and to get everybody back to school, so thank you for what you do.
Okay, uh, Mike Simpson? Mike, are you there?
Okay, can you hear me?
I can, oh, is it Michelle?
Yes.
Hi, please identify yourself and give your address, please.
Sure, Michelle Simpson, um, Porter Street. So I wanna, um, thank you guys, um, as you know, my husband was in that position, and it is not an easy position, and I want to thank you for your time and your commitment. But I also have to agree with Jason, Pe- Peter and Heather, we need, we really need to get our kids back to school. The emotional toll on them and us is just, it doesn't have to be this way. Those who don't want their kids back in school, they have that option to keep their kids out. Those of us who have been completing the surveys, saying that we want our kids back, we don't have that choice. We are being stopped with bringing our kids back to school. I mean, we, we really need to get them in there, and we would even sign a waiver just holding nobody accountable, just to get our kids back to school where they belong, with their friends and social and emotional, and with the teachers, because they're falling behind a lot. And I watch it every day here, and please, if they do go red again, please, get the kids in and keep them in. So, that's my, my word.
Thank you. Jeff? Jeff, are you there?
Jeff from Slack, two sixty-eight Bachelor Street.
Hi, Jeff.
Hello. I'm addressing the committee tonight because at the last school committee meeting, there were several parents who made statements representing the unheard portion of the community, requesting that the hybrid school model be made available on an accelerated timeline as compared to the current plan, only to be frustratingly told by the committee, this is the first we've heard of this, why don't parents speak out more? And it's not just you, it's a community decision, amongst other dismissive statements. Over the last year, we've completed several surveys put out by the school committee. I understand not all opinions, thoughts and ideas provided in response to these surveys can be accommodated, but I did consider at the time, the survey feedback to be a satisfactory means of communicating to the school committee. Those who have gone heard are part of the community, and providing both virtual and in-person learning is not mutually exclusive. I appreciate there's a balancing act between all interested parties that comprise our community, but far too frequently, there's an externality whose importance is artificially escalated above the importance of students. Under the COVID-nineteen paradigm, every subset of students in our community, except for one, has been accommodated from the perspective of having available their desired learning method. Students have been able to homeschool, transfer to either in-person private or other in-person public schools, or willfully remain remote in the Granby Public School System. The group of systems, group of students who are part of this community and desire to best achieve their educational goals by attending in-person school in accordance with state health guidelines have been left behind. I find remote learning, while a great option to have available, to be an overall substandard and inferior educational product as compared to in-person learning. I'm cautiously optimistic about the recent state plan to open schools to in-person learning five days a week in April. But even absent this plan, I would still implore this committee to immediately pursue the availability of in-person learning five days a week for the remaining three and a half months of the school year. From the school committee's policies, section B, Governance and Operations Document, it states, "Primary responsibility is to establish those purposes, programs and policies that will best produce the educational achievement needed by our students." Unfortunately, the hard work of this committee is not meeting that stated responsibility for all students. There is a portion of students that are woefully underrepresented and that is a subset of students who best produce their educational achievement through in-person learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can. Please identify yourself with your address.
Yep, will do. So Janice Kovich and I live on Chickaby Street in Granby and I have been a part of this town for eleven years. And I am here to state that we need to open the schools with a higher level of urgency. I am not very optimistic that the children will return to school by the end of March, as stated by the committee, due to the fact that I have a first grader, sixth grader and twelfth grader. My first grader has attended school or been allowed to attend school eight days since September. That is it. I feel that the need to move towards full time needs to be with full force, not just caution. If Bay State Hospital can screen everyone that comes in their doors, we should be able to do the same. Take temperatures as coming in, put up an infrared camera that alerts if someone's temperature is over a set level. Hampshire County is the fourth lowest level in the state for deaths up through March second. And that's as of today, I went on to the CDC. Less than five people have passed in our town. The highest at-risk categories are already vaccinated if they chose to. If not, they're still on the list and will be in the next couple of weeks. The age groups of zero to nineteen in all of twenty twenty in this state, less than five have passed from March tenth of last year through twelve thirty-one. Governor Charlie Baker calls for the full-time learning by April. Students are learned, are losing academically and emotionally. Remember, these kids will be running our country. We need to have the option as parents to make the choice to keep our child home from doing remote learning or to send them to school. The CDC stress transmission is not increased by schools being open. Everyone's physical and emotional health has negatively been impacted, which we will not see the full extent of this impact for many years to come. The children of our future that are the least likely to get the virus deserve to be given priority. They have been put on the back burner long enough. Our kids, parents, teachers and staff are imperative to our future. And now working in a school has the risk of vulnerability, all of us do, to many things. I mean, we consistently have to deal with things such as colds, flu, lice, the potential of getting meningitis. Accessibility of our kids going back to school could need more vape products available as well as other terrible things. But that's the reality. We all have the right to freedom of speech as well as the right to make the best decisions for our children and families. The measurements used to assess if the students can return to school are too stringent. It leaves most of the state in the position to stay remote. Even my first grader has only been to attend school eight days this entire year. Every time we thought she was going back, oh no, now back to remote.
This is your three-minute mark? I'll give you fifteen more seconds, okay?
Okay, the attention span of a seven-year-old is fourteen to twenty-one, twenty-one minutes. How can you expect them to be in front of a computer? I hope that what I have reviewed will be taken into consideration for all of our well-being, not just immediately, but also for our future.
Thank you, Janice. I don't know, I think it says cross or crass, I can't. It's kind of blurry. I don't have my glasses on. I'm sodding up. I apologize. Cross.
I got from the panelists.
Are you still on mute? Hold on one second.
Can you hear me now?
I can. Please make sure to identify yourself along with your address.
Ivy Cross, one twenty-nine Pleasant Street.
Thank you.
I would first like to say on how really disturbed I was in watching the meeting last, actually two weeks ago. The way that parents' voices were just disregarded on the petition that Peter White sent out. I look at my eight-year-old every day when I put my five-year-old on the bus and I have to look at her face and she cries on a weekly basis that she wants to go to school. She doesn't have that choice because it just keeps getting put off, put off, put off. And I'm just holding my breath, waiting to see if she's going to get put off again next week because this has been going on since September. Also, it just seems like we're getting guidance that from the governor, the CDC, and it just doesn't seem like anyone's listening to what they have to say. We're a small town, we should be able to open these schools up full time. I don't understand what the holdup is. I work in healthcare. I've seen this hit the hardest place in our community. We can get past this. These children do not pass this up. We've seen this. I don't understand why no one else can see this. I also would like to say, moving forward, this COVID is not going anywhere. We need to make sure that we can open these schools up full time, keep them open full time and move forward. And lastly, I also want to say, I was the one that came on early. I heard what you guys said when you were unmuted. I find it very disturbing because my eight-year-old was walking by and to hear bleep, I've only had ninety minutes of sleep. I think it's a little inappropriate for a school committee member to be saying anything like that in our school system, in our library. Thank you very much.
I'm just going to address that last thing that you said. So I apologize because I'm the one that said we were going to be lambasted by thirty people. And it was, let me finish, please, excuse me, let me finish, just a moment. That was my way of venting because to me, these all feel like personal attacks because I am putting my blood, sweat and tears into these. So I apologize from the bottom of my heart because it was never my intention. And the person that said she had ninety minutes of sleep, she didn't swear. I, I, I will look, I will defer to you. However, her house was practically destroyed in the windstorm last night and she didn't get much sleep. She texted me at five thirty this morning with a picture of a tree through her roof, a tree destroyed her pool, a tree destroyed her shed and a tree destroyed her, her hot tub. So, you know, there's a lot of things going on and I apologize that we were, we thought we were off camera. We've learned our lesson. I know I have. I know that there's cases in the news where people have had to resign because of things that were said when we thought the camera was muted. I never thought we would be in that position, but it was truly not meant to be disrespectful. So I'm going to apologize for that. And I, I don't feel that it was harsh enough that I need to, anyone's going to be calling for my resignation over it. It was a moment of stress relief for us because these meetings are stressful. And I truly appreciate all of your comments and I appreciate everyone's comments that are on here. And it's very hard to sit here and listen for, it's not just you. I believe your name, you said your name was Ivy. I'm sorry, what?
It's Eileen.
Eileen, I apologize. But to every, everyone's here, I take these personally because I, that's the kind of person that I am. And I don't like that people think we're not doing a good enough job.
I didn't say you're doing a good job. I said that you just don't want to listen to the parents that are saying, when we hear these comments saying, we're all in this together, you're not in this together. When I see my kids failing at home because they cannot act like normal children because they can't go to school, they can't see their teachers, they can't see their peers, they can't go and play in a playground. These kids are being hurt socially, emotionally, and it's going to affect them in the future.
So Eileen, I'm going to also make sure that you know that you can reach out to Carol Hepworth and also Megan Sheppart. She's our Director of People Services. If your children are having a hard time, we've been saying right along that we would make concessions to get kids in that are having a tough, a tough time. So I would implore you to please reach out to Carol or to Megan Sheppart. If you need an email, you can email me directly and I will forward them to you. And let's see if we can help make the situation better for you. And I want you to understand that I am listening to you and I'm not only listening, but I'm hearing you.
Yeah, I have nothing more to say because I'm just, I'm too angry right now after hearing the beginning of this meeting and I don't think I can listen to this anymore. And this is the problem why the parents get so frustrated, listening to these meetings over and over and over again and they're not being heard. So thanks. Have a great night.
Okay, Katie? Katie, are you there? You're still muted.
Okay. Um, so.
Name and address.
Yep. So it's Katie. We're at, on North Street in Granby. So I'm going to kind of give you a slightly different perspective. I'm actually a healthcare worker and I have been through this entire thing. I, since the beginning, I've been treating patients hands-on with every single patient that I treat for thirty minutes. Typically, we see about twelve patients a day and that's between, and there's five different clinics. And, and there's been multiple times where therapists have treated patients who've ultimately tested positive. So I guess what I'm really trying to express here is that across five clinics, multiple therapists, three to six therapists in each clinic seeing twelve patients a day each, which rotates about every month. The only thing we're doing different is we're wearing masks every, every, with every patient. We clean all the materials in our workspace between every patient. But we're unable to maintain the six, six feet of different distance. So that's really the only difference between what we're able to do and what I feel that the schools and the kids can do by going in person full-time five days. You know, I don't know if, you know, there's other healthcare workers out there, you know, that have sort of seen some of this. I've, I've treated patients that have been on event from COVID for over a month. I've treated those patients. I know exactly what it does. I'm completely aware. But in terms of the evidence, it's extremely low, the transmissions for children. So I truly think that the kids can be in person four or five days, whatever it be, if you need that day, you know, in the middle to clean. But I, I think, you know, the kids are having a tough time, my kids included, socially, emotionally. It's entirely too much screen time for a first grader. It's entirely too much screen time for a fifth grader. So that's, that's kind of my two cents from, you know, a healthcare perspective who's kind of been in the thick of it this entire time. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie? I wanted Jackie to point.
Hello? Can you hear me?
I can. Jeremy, please identify yourself with name and address.
Jeremy LaPointe, seventy Chickaby Street. Alright, parents, sixth grader Malin, eighth grader Logan. It's been a frustrating year to say the least. You guys know that. Our feelings about our children going back to in-person learning is a no-brainer. The statistics on their safety is undeniable. Parochial schools have been back to in-person learning since the beginning of the year with little to no incidents. On the other hand, the statistics on keeping our children out of in-person learning and away from their peers is much, is much more dangerous. Alcoholism, domestic abuse, anxiety, depression, even suicide on average are up over five hundred percent. That's just here in Massachusetts. I want the school administration, the Granby Health Department, the teachers' union and all the teachers to know, the most important thing to me as a parent is the safety of my children, not only physically, but mentally and emotionally. So since we know our children are in no danger from COVID itself, I propose that we change the protocol from six feet social distancing to three foot social distancing and we ignore the red-yellow status while using logic and reasoning rather than bending to the will of the teachers' union. I'd say if you want to stay home and stay home, but if you want, if we want our children to go back, that should be our decision to make. The solution is very clear. We want our children back in school, five days a week, learning with their peers. Another thing that I wanted to add is my wife read a book called Glow Kids and I, I think everyone should probably, if you're a parent and your kids are on, on these tablets and these computers all the time, you should take the chance to, take the time to read this because it basically goes into the science behind all the screen time and, and the, it's detrimental. We're gonna, we're gonna melt our kids' brains. Part of the book touched on Bill Gates himself, you know, the owner of Google, Microsoft, the guy that's, you know, huge behind all this stuff, the guy that made billions of dollars, giving all, selling all kinds of tablets to all these schools and, and computers to all these schools with stolen tax dollars. He didn't let his kids have as much screen time because he knew what the, how detrimental it was. The fact that our kids are on these screens for so many hours a day is, it's disgusting. Like, I, I, I watch my son go on in the morning and within ten, fifteen minutes, he's back off and he's like, oh, I already did my work. Like, this education, I mean, it's a joke. And we can't, we shouldn't sugarcoat what's going on here. This year is like a year that never happened. I don't think my kids are progressing in any positive ways when it comes to learning anything this year. This is, I think we all should be ashamed that we swallowed the pill so quickly and alright, and that we, and that we were willing to go along with it. There's, I talked to people from other towns and they're all shocked that we're still, you know, doing this learning at home. We, we, there's a better option. We know what it is. Our kids aren't in danger. It's time to send our kids back full-time, like right now. There's, we don't, we don't need to wait any longer. That's my feeling. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
See you Jen. Bye Steph.
Stephanie Vinsallet.
Hello. Hello, Stephanie Vinsallet, one seventeen Maximilian Drive. I have two children who attend East Meadow. One is in first grade and has returned in person, another in fourth who schedules to return on Monday. I obviously agree with everything everyone has said so far and want my kids back in school. I mean, I honestly think we all do. My comment is a little bit different. While it's obviously so great to have my first grader back in school two days a week, I want to comment and bring forward and make you on the school committee aware of my concern regarding the hybrid model structure, specifically the remote instruction. On my first grader's two remote days home, she is completely independent, aside from a morning meeting and a math lesson. She has a stack of worksheets to complete or online assignments to do. As a six-year-old who is just learning to read, that means she needs an adult to sit with her all day and provide instruction and explanation of the assignments. As a working parent, this is impossible. My issue with this is a different grade one teacher is live streaming her class to her remote students all day. Those, those students are receiving live instruction, modeling of assignments and are not quote-unquote on their own. Trust me when I say I appreciate all of the hard work that the teachers are putting in and I realize this is hard for us all. I have expressed these concerns and questions to the school and have not received a response back yet. I just feel like there shouldn't be that much of a difference between learning within the same I just feel like there shouldn't be that much of a difference between learning within the same grade level. It doesn't feel like equal education for the students in the class. What are the expectations? What are the requirements? I know there is some time standard for synchronous instruction that is supposed to be met. This is just one of the reasons why, again, I agree with everyone saying we need to get these kids back in full-time with the priority on the youngest grades first. Thank you.
Stephanie, if you wouldn't mind, would you send me an email or forward me the email and I'll see what I can do to find out where we are with that?
I absolutely can.
It's J. Bartos, B-A-R-T as in Tom, O, S as in Sam, Z as in zebra, at GranbySchoolsMA.net.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
I can't see. Please identify yourself with name and address.
Steve Goodine, Bachelor Street.
Thank you.
Good evening. I want to start by addressing the inaccurate comment referenced by Adam during last meeting. When Pete White discussed 300 parents on a petition, we, the silent majority, bring concerns to certain people to have them voiced, not overloading the system during the meeting. Why have people repeatedly say the same thing over and over again? I also understand that it's not so easy when you have the Board of Health, you have a Teachers Union, and you have a committee that all have to make decisions. And you also have an administration that have to work together. But I would like to see the spacing inside the classrooms be three feet. I understand that the students are supposed to wear masks all day long. I'm hoping we can revisit this with the Board of Health and make this happen. I would also like to reiterate Heather's point. The kids are cleaner when they're in school. I'm a teacher at Smith Vocational High School in Northampton. Granby is one of our sending districts and we receive kids from all over the place. We've been in class, we've been in school since September. And we have a occasional, we have the occasional positive test here and there, but one of the biggest metrics we go by is in-school transmission. And not having that passed throughout the school or not having it passed throughout the shops is very important, and that's the metric that we go by. With the cleaning procedures that we follow, with all the COVID safety protocols that we follow, there has been hardly any transmission student to student. And these are high school students that, well, I mean, we all know what high school students do. So, and especially in a shop atmosphere. I would like to see the students go back full-time. I understand that it's not as easy, it's easier said than done, but I would like to see the students go back full-time in Granby. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Katie Walker.
Can you hear me?
I can. Please identify yourself with name and address.
My name's Katie Walker. I'm at 640 Burton Street in Chickaby. I'm a school choice family.
Thank you.
I have a student in third grade and 11th. They each have ADHD and learning difficulties. My husband works full-time and thankfully I'm able to work remotely, but still full-time. This has been a very difficult time to manage remote school and work. Having an elementary student and a high schooler, their schedules are different and they each need to be reminded of class times and when to log on. This takes away from my work, which has been sporadic for the past year, making it, so I have to put in hours in the evening and after school. My daughter has difficulty reading. Not all of the lessons and instructions are easy for her to read. Therefore, I have to read to her and help her regularly. I do appreciate the extra help sessions the school provides, but it hasn't been enough for her to be independent. Not to mention, never using a computer before, she struggles with technology. They are told to toggle between screens and go between classrooms and it has been overwhelming to her. She gets very frustrated when the teacher cannot hear her and technology fails. It is overwhelming to her when other children's computers are loud or static. Our relationship has been strained because I want her to do well and she is frustrated and overwhelmed. She has actually said she hates school now. She benefits from student-teacher interaction and peer-to-peer interaction for all sorts of reasons. From learning to behavior and for communicating outside the family. My high schooler also struggles with school. And before COVID, we stressed less screen time when now they are in their rooms doing live sessions and then in their rooms doing homework. They are so isolated. They get upset, they get depressed, then they want to give up. Again, we are the only ones helping them, so it tends to create a bit of hostility. I depended on teachers to be their outside objective support person, which is why they need to get back into the classroom. I appreciate all of the teachers' efforts. I understand that it is difficult for them as well. This is new for all of us, but as we all know, it is a fact that children rarely get COVID. And if they do, it is asymptomatic. It is a fact that there is more spread in the community than in schools. It is a fact that private schools are operating safely and have been the entire time. Masks work, distancing works. We are also a smaller school. Why can't we get back to the classroom where children loved learning and their mental health was not compromised? I have seen too many tears, too much anxiety, and some depression. Our children need teachers, need children, need structure. Here's something my daughter said on the way to pick up a packet at school. Mom, I miss the drive to school. I miss waiting in the parking lot with you, listening to music. I miss getting in line and running up to the sidewalk to go into school. I miss everyone. Please, consider this petition and let's get them all back in school, in person, and full-time. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Papino? Papino? I apologize, I got it wrong. Jennifer, if you're there, you're still on mute.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. Please identify yourself with name and address.
Jennifer Papino, 25 Parrish Hill Road here in Granby. So I'm not going to take up a ton of time. I know a lot of parents have spoken today and they've, they've spoken what a lot of us are feeling. But after the last school committee meeting, I did reach out to Carol as well as the school committee. I felt that Peter's comments were dismissed. And I by no means mean this as an attack on the school committee. That is not what is intended here. But I, I just am begging the school committee to really, really carefully consider getting our children back in school. I think as Jess and Jason and Peter all stated, the statistics are showing that in-school transmission is low. Our kids are benefiting from being back in the classroom. I have a first grader who's spent eight days in the classroom, but I can already tell you that the days that he is in school, behavior is just better. I think, you know, I, I don't envy, and I think I said this in my email to, to you all as well and to Audrey, I don't envy the position you all are in. I know this must be incredibly difficult. And Jen, I know you said this felt like a, a personal attack to have 30 parents coming in and, and wanting to speak, but I think we are here because we do want our voices heard and we thought that the petition was going to do that. So that was my intent for speaking tonight. I just wanted everyone to, to kind of hear from another parent, we want our kids in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Carmody? I can. Please identify yourself with name and address.
Yep, I am Michelle Carmody at 501 East State Street. I just wanted to, you know, talk to you guys. It was really upsetting last meeting when Adam had said that not all the parents were talking up and speaking up. I'm the first person who is the worst person in the world to be a public speaker or to talk to anyone. If anybody knows me, which a few of you on the school committee do, and I thank you guys for all of your hard work, know me, I have a mouth. Not always is it filtered or good. So Peter being rational, understanding was the best route for me personally to go, where he was saying everything that I wanted to say, but saying it polite, politically correct, and appropriate. For me personally, I have an eight-year-old in third grade and a 14-year-old freshman. My freshman goes to Southwick as a school choice because of her IEP. She has been in school almost this whole time in September, since September, five days a week. It is so heartbreaking to tell my eight-year-old, no abs, I'm sorry, your sister can go to school, but you can't. But mom, I want to go and see my friends. I get that and I feel bad for her. But, you know, my only saving grace with this child is that she goes to children's first. She has Donna and all of those amazing teachers on her side. And with the mask, which all of us thought the kids weren't going to be able to do, they're doing great. There's 26 of them, students, in that school age area. With their separation and their distance, they haven't gotten COVID, they haven't had any problems, they disinfect, they do their hand sanitizing. No parents go in, the teachers, the directors, and the parents, we all talk to each other, we do a survey every morning. We make sure that no one has COVID, no one's been around COVID. If your kid has the sniffles, you do the smart thing, you don't send them in. And you're like, okay, well, it was just a cold, they'll go back now. With communication, it can be done. These kids need to be with each other. They need to be with their teachers. These teachers, I can't even imagine the struggle that they have trying to teach kids, especially younger ones, through a computer. That's gotta be the hardest thing in the world. My child never needed ADHD meds. Now that she's remote learning, she needed ADHD meds. And another thing, she has been so depressed and things have happened that we had to throw her into emergency therapy for reasons that I'm not going into full details for, but nothing that an eight-year-old should have ever had come out of her mouth, which was absolutely heartbreaking. Please, I beg you guys, to let these kids go back in person. They need it. They need their teachers, they need the structure, they need the principals, they need the nurse, they need recesses, they need getting hurt, getting in trouble. They need it all. They need to be with everyone. I have a 97-year-old man living in my house and it is completely fine. She goes to children, Abby goes to children's first five days a week and has been since August. Nothing has come home with COVID. He hasn't gotten any colds, any flu, any symptoms, and their rooms are right across the hall from each other. And she is with people all the time. Please, if you guys could do anything, just let these kids go back to being kids. They need it more than we need to be adults, sitting in front of a computer with them. They need to be able to be good adults like we are now. We were in school, we got dirty, we got hurt, we got in trouble, we got bad grades, good grades, honor roll.
30 seconds.
I just beg you guys, please let these kids go back in person. And I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing, but please let them go.
Thank you, Michelle. I don't know how to say this next one. Is it Seltrix? Sealtrix? I apologize, I'm butchering, butchering your last name, or it could be your first name.
My, my first name's Kenneth and my last name's Crowley. It's just my handle name, sorry.
Please identify yourself, uh, name and address.
All right, my name's Kenneth Crowley, 23 East Street, Granby. All right, I, I, I've listened to a lot of people talk today and this is my first ever meeting on this. And to be honest, look, guys, this pandemic has been crazy for all of us. For us to pit bit, blame on the school system or, oh gee, I heard something before the meeting started, that's not what this is about. All right, what this is about is about our children. Okay? And to be honest with you, some people can say children are low categories, whatever, but until your kid gets this, I'm sorry, you're gonna be really upset when they do. Okay? Now, I took the survey. My choice was to keep my kid at home because quite frankly, she's excelling at the home learning. Quite frankly, she's getting hundreds and everything. But the problem with the home learning, if the, she stays in it now, is that she won't have as much work with the teacher if she decides to stay in for the rest of the year. So it leaves us with no choice but to send her back on Monday, Tuesday. She's a fourth grader. But the thing is, is that kids at home that do choose this because of safety and the, and the fear of something happening should be able to get the same education as people at the school. Now, I've heard of certain classrooms being able to do that exactly with video chat going while teaching the class at school. Quite frankly, in my opinion, I think teachers have had a break. And the reason why I think that is because with the home learning, which I'm sure all parents have noticed, they get about maybe an hour, hour and a half interaction with the teacher and then are given a packet of work. And several times, my daughter has missed that, which is, you know, it's what it's been. But the governor has stated that we have to do five days a week by April 1st. So even given the parents a choice to keep their kid out of school at the end of the year, they can't. So my opinion on this is you guys gotta get your stuff together. You guys gotta work at it and figure out how this is gonna be done. As far as social distancing and masks go, guys, it's gotta be done. You can't be minusing it to three feet because you think it'll be better for someone else or for a kid. I get it. But, you know, as parents, you know, I hear a lot of complaints how their kids aren't doing well or work and whatnot. It's been the same for me. I work full-time at Smith &amp; Wesson. My wife works full-time at, uh, Smith &amp; Wesson. We show up at home, we help our kid, we play with our kid, we do what we can. But she knows, and she has told us as a responsible kid at nine years old, that she has to do this to protect her aunt. Her aunt's 73. She has to do this to protect the family. So what this is about, guys, isn't.
Is it Kenneth? Ken?
Yep.
Um, 10 seconds?
Okay. What this is about is not blame. What this is about is our children. So, you know, think for a second on safety. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I'm gonna go with Matt Mishaazik because Janice already spoke once and we'll come back to you after.
Hello, how are you? Matt Mishaazik, 16 Green Meadow Lane. Everyone hear me? All right, just making sure, just making sure you can hear me. So I want to thank everybody on the school committee. I want to thank parents for their patience. I want to thank teachers for their patience. I do feel kids should be going back to school. I also understand the hybrid model. The kids haven't been given a choice to do anything. They've just been told what to do. They're the only group in all this mess that have not had a say in anything they can do. And the same goes for the teachers. We've just kind of thrown kids into this model and we've also thrown teachers into this model. Some work is harder, some work is easier. Both my kids are accelerating at it. It's fine with me. Teachers need more tools. This hybrid model's not gonna go anywhere. I work at UMass Amherst. I've been invited to the Technology Admin Meeting tomorrow to hopefully give some of my professional advice on how to better utilize technology in the classroom. I'm sure there's grant money. I'm sure there's existing equipment. We're doing things at UMass for literally pennies to do remote learning. And I also understand remote learning's not going anywhere. It's gonna be here for a while. So the hybrid model is, and I don't think in the beginning, a lot of parents quite understood this. If you want your kid to go to school, you go to school. Want your kid to stay home, stay home. We need to allow the teachers to teach with technology where they are teaching virtually in the classroom to the kids remotely as if the kids remotely are in the classroom. It has to be a better model. It can't just be a laptop in front of a face. Hopefully, I'm gonna be presenting some stuff to tech admins tomorrow. Hopefully that helps things. This ain't going anywhere. I want the kids back in school, trust me. I want to give my wife a break, just pulling her hair out. I'm lucky, I get to go to work. And I think a lot of fingers need to be pointed also at the Board of Health. If no one's watched Board of Health Committee meetings, it's a joyride. You should give it a shot. You can crack open a cold one and have a good time. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, Janice?
I just wanted to say that I know that everyone's been working hard and that. and that all of you did not choose to be involved during this time of the pandemic. So you're probably being given one of the most difficult things to be challenged with of any group of committee members in many, many, many years. So, you know, try, I know it's hard, I take things personally too, but try really hard. I know it's hard to not take it personally, just that, you know, everyone is trying to share their opinions and even me, I know over the last year, I've tried to attend a meeting or two and I felt very uncomfortable. I didn't feel it was a very open scenario. So I would just like to ask the committee to try to look at that, um, going forward. How you can make the citizens, um, the people of the town feel more comfortable to speak at these meetings. That's it. But good work.
Thank you. I am going to press that last comment. We, um, and, uh, please, don't take this personally because, uh, it's not meant in a derogatory way. But we are governed by open meeting law. We chose to add visitor comments and I say we as the collective, we, Granby School Committee, before my time here, chose to add visitor comments as a way to connect with the people. However, when we listen to the comments, um, it does not mean that we have the ability to act momentarily or at a moment's notice. There are many players that are, um, that also have a say. So I, um, I hope that people feel that they were heard tonight. We've spent an hour listening to comments. I know that for me personally, this has probably been one of the hardest hours I've had on the, on the committee. Because I don't want anyone to feel that we're taking any of our job lightly. There's a lot of things that are going on behind the scenes that we're not at liberty to discuss. And it's not as simple as saying we want the kids to come back because a lot of parents want their kids to come back. And by the way, I'm one of those parents. I want my kids to come back, but like Emery would tell me constantly, is I need to wear my school committee hat when I'm sitting here. So sometimes there are things that are going on that make you look at decisions and make you look at things differently. I do feel badly that people think that we were dismissive to the petition two weeks ago. I don't know what we could have said or done that would be an instant impact. I don't know that I, I, I'm not, I'm sure even how to say this. I don't think that we would ever be able to, just because a petition was brought to us, change our mode of learning on a moment's notice. And I appreciate the petition. It scares the heck out of me actually, because there were some comments made on Facebook and things about class action lawsuits and legal action against us as a school committee and against us as a district. Um, that's terrifying to me because that's, that's my name. That's my work. So I, I do appreciate everyone taking the time to talk to us tonight. I don't really know how to, um, how to move forward. I mean, I, I know that we have the rest of our business meeting here and I don't want to be dismissive, but we need to go on with the rest of our agenda. I think everyone has heard what you're all saying. I think that there's a lot of people in this room that feel the same way. I think there's a lot of people that are listening, um, that maybe disagree with some of the things that were said. Um, and I'll open it up to the floor if anyone has anything else that they would like to say. And then I think we need to move on.
So, so Jen, I just wanna echo what you're saying and certainly appreciate parents voicing their concerns and, and their opinions because, you know, as a parent, you're your child's biggest advocate. And, you know, it's not easy to, you know, speak up at a meeting and these meetings certainly probably aren't, um, the warm and fuzzy nurturing places where parents feel like they have that opportunity to do so. Um, it is, it is a different experience when you, when you're taking that opportunity to voice your opinion in this setting. So, you know, if anyone has ideas of what that could feel like, you know, certainly reach out in terms of how to make this more open or more welcoming, because we still have to operate within the guidance and guidelines of an open meeting. Um, but that doesn't mean that we're not open to considering other thoughts or other opinions. I think the biggest takeaway for me is that, you know, as tough as that is to hear and as hard as it is to hear that people and parents might feel like, um, we're not hearing them or not considering what their opinions are. Um, that, you know, we think we certainly are and we are working really hard. I know I'm very new to this, so I'm gonna just kind of include myself in that, kind of hitting the ground and running. Um, but again, just what Jen said is it's not easy to kind of make changes immediately, even based on very persuasive and informative feedback. Um, but it is heard and we do hear you loud and clear. And we, um, certainly are trying our best to take that information and move forward.
And to piggyback off of that, that, that's been a discussion we've had for a couple of years now. I mean, I've started attending school committee meetings over two years ago and I remember talking the same way. Like we felt like we weren't being heard, that we didn't have enough chance to provide feedback and they'd watch a whole meeting and I'd feel riled up and then the meeting ended and then I'd have to wait two weeks before I wanted to share unless I wrote an email. So, I mean, we, we, we talked at some point about having a Dropbox that people could put comments in after the meeting that we could potentially read, but now we're doing remote, which we're back to in-person. Um, and we welcome the emails and yes, this was an hour, but I think it's benefit, beneficial for everyone, all the stakeholders to have heard parents today. And, and I can appreciate how nerve-wracking it was and is to speak in front of everybody. Um, but, you know, I, I do respond to emails when people email us as well. So I, I think it's part of the conversation and I think I'm glad that we were able to hear from everyone today, for everyone to hear from everyone today, so.
And I would just like to say, I do acknowledge when people speak. I do agree with them. Um, I do understand their struggles, the very bad struggles and the very bad side of it. So I completely, completely understand, except for like I said, uh, just because it's my child, this is a community decision. We have to make decisions. If it was up to me, everybody'd be at school.
Yep.
That's just how I am. Um, but it's not just up to me. So this is, and I do acknowledge every, every meeting when I listen. I do acknowledge it, I do understand that bad side of it. So as a parent, I do, but as a school committee member, my those deci- decisions will influence when I'm a school committee member here, sitting here for all children and all parents and all teachers and all administration. I'm not here for just me and my trials.
Can you hear us now? All right.
All right.
All right. So why don't we try the winter sports update again?
Can you hear me okay?
Ken? Oh, no. No.
All right.
All right.
Try that again.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can.
Perfect. I'm not gonna share my screen. I'm just gonna give you a quick update about winter sports. Cross-country started Monday. It was awesome to see them out there. We have seven sign-ups and a few more expected. Um, Coach Nancy has done an incredible job, um, taking over cross-country, so it's nice to see them out there. Um, girls' basketball slated to play Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Um, there is a, typically there's a heat modification that we have to follow for the MIA, but today we had to follow the cold modification guidelines, so we had to cancel today. So they are, um, going to be beginning tomorrow and boys as well. So that's awesome. It's really exciting to see that. I was on the Board of Health tonight for spring sports. Um, they gave us the green light for spring sports. Um, I will not have to go back to a meeting. They're not gonna micromanage spring sports, so my proposal stated to follow EEA guidelines, MIA guidelines, um, with those specific sport guidelines slated to begin April twenty-sixth, and that was for baseball, softball, um, girls' lacrosse, boys' lacrosse and girls' and boys' volleyball. And playing other schools for baseball, softball, lacrosse for girls and boys and boys' volleyball. So the only obstacle that we're going to have now is whether or not boys' volleyball will actually be able to be inside. So I will need the school committee to give us their blessing on the sports proposal as well. And again, I just have to work out the boys' volleyball being inside.
Awesome. And did, uh, are we still doing the co-op for cross coun- is it cross-country that we're doing a co-op, South Heather students or no?
Um, we do have the co-op, it does exist, but they have track in fall too, so there are athletes that they run both, actually, so. So that's all.
That was pretty fantastic.
Yeah, lots of great news.
I like it. Does anyone, oh, we had a question for you about busing? But I don't remember, I wrote busing, but does anyone remember what we wanted to ask her about busing?
Yeah, Ally, so they, they, um, there's no more, um, capacity limits for, um, buses for, um, going forward, but I think Stephanie had a question about how that affects athletic buses and our teams on athletic buses. Capacity-wise, just figured you would be able to speak to more of that for additional details regarding athletic transportation.
Yeah, we would follow the same transportation guidelines. I would just expect that they would be wearing a mask on the bus.
Yeah, all I say, like windows open masks, all that, but they just lifted the capacity, um, restrictions and, and again, it was a specific to athletics question and I didn't wanna, um, say anything that, uh, wasn't true, so I just referred to you, so.
Mm-hmm. Um, pending the size of baseball, they would, um, baseball numbers, I think we have a significant amount of baseball players in the program. They would need to take two buses, um, keep them separate. And lacrosse is a varsity-only sport for both boys and girls and similar with softball. We really won't know until we have, um, sign-ups done.
Excellent. Does anyone have any other questions for Ally for winter sports? Slash, spring sports now?
All right, um, actually, hold on, did we vote on football last meeting? I thought we did.
Right, we did? Okay, so we're good, no mind. Nope. All right, Audrey, superintendent search.
Uh, the position closed yesterday. Well, the, the position closed, but
Posting.
The application process, as I said, and I was like, oh, um, the application closed yesterday and the, um, subcommittee is meeting tomorrow to do some initial vetting, um, which is something that usually would be done through masks, but because we didn't utilize them as we were using them in the past, um, our subcommittee is working on that. Um, and then we are meeting again on the eighth and on the tenth to go over the applications, um, that make it to the next level and kinda going from there, um, and then hoping to do interviews the week of the fifteenth. Our first initial interviews to come up with some candidates to bring forth.
Excellent.
Moving along. Anything to add? You can think of that I missed?
No, just looking forward to some nice long meetings.
Yes.
They're all long meetings.
One, yeah, that's-
For that, for that purpose, right.
Yes. More long meetings.
Different purpose.
Long meetings, yes.
Okay, next up is the medication administration policy.
Hi, everyone. So as part of the application process for the state where we have to renew our, um, medication delegation and Epi, EpiPen, um, training for school staff, um, particularly when nursing staff's not available such as field trips. Um, we have to review our medication administration plan to make sure it's in, um, alignment with the state regulations. So, um, I went through it, um, and they provide a checklist, um, with different things just to make sure it's in there and, um, I gave you a copy, you should have it in your folder, I think you've had it for a little bit. Um, that goes over the current policy and the areas that are in yellow are the, um, additions. And then the blue areas are already things that are being done, um, by the school nurses, but I wanted to highlight and have reminded them as part of their nursing practice. So, um, one thing that was added was, um, you know, talking with the nursing staff is to encourage and support the participation of parents and their students' medication administration plan. So making sure that nursing and parents or guardians are communicating as needed about, um, the student's health status and any changes to medication or their status in school. Um, and then as well as any medications that may be, be, be given at home that can impact the students' learning and the educational setting and, um, during school-sponsored events. Um, the next area that I have reviewed, um, with the nursing staff is just making sure that, um, their medication administration plan, the student's plan, also references any other health or educational plan that's being developed, um, through, um, idea. So the special education law or federal laws, including, um, idea in section five oh four. So we've made sure that that's included on our med administration plan paperwork. Um, we've also included, um, students who may have allergy or asthma action plans or individualized healthcare plans, just to make sure that those are in there as well and they all are connecting. So it's not just one lone document. Um, the, another addition that was added was that, um, the school nurses, you know, we've already done this in practice, but making sure that we are having a plan in place to ensure that the positive identification of a student, um, who's receiving the medication. So we have, um, we're following the eight rights of medication administration and we are also asking, um, families to provide pictures. If not, we try to, um, you know, get them off of Reddick Car, we put them on the original pharmacy label packaging so that, um, you know, nurses are double-checking, making sure that that medicine that they're giving is meeting the name that's on the bottle and the student that's physically in front of them by comparing that with the picture while they're doing their checks. Um, this is particularly important, especially if we have subs, if nurses are coming in to cover on field trips and whatnot as well. Um, one of the other additions that was added was making sure, especially for staff who are delegating medication to, um, you know, making sure that they're meeting the, the equivalent, they have a high school, um, they're a high school graduate or an equivalent. Um, you know, they're able to make sound judgments, read and write English and meet all the other, um, qualifications under the law. And, um, and then obviously reminding this, the nursing staff as well that we can only keep up to a thirty-day supply of medication, um, in the schools. And then, um, making sure that obviously if there's any, um, issues that we are reporting it to the Department of Public Health and that they can come in at any time and review students' own records to make sure that they are in compliance with the, um, um, medication administration policies. Um, to making sure that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing safely. So those are pretty much the, um, edits to the policy itself. Um, the school physician has already reviewed it um, and has given his approval. So it was important that I review this too as we are, um, finishing the process for our application with the state.
Do you need a vote on this from us?
Um, yes, I think we, we should, we do, um, just to make sure that it's, um, you know, approved and everything's good to go.
Okay, can I have, uh, does anyone have any other questions for Nancy or comments?
Um, before we approve it, I'm just can't help myself. There's a couple grammatic things I'm noticing. Are we gonna like double check through three that'll, like all that'll be?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry. Sounds like just so we're not like sign sealing this one and then someone reads it and is like, wait a minute, okay.
Yeah, this is the draft form, so I'm gonna be removing all the highlights and going through everything one more time.
I will make the motion to approve the medication administration policy for the Granby Public Schools.
Someone second?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you mind moving the sprinkler system up before school choice?
Sure.
Conversation, um, fellow Ally hanging on. I'm assuming this school choice conversation is going to be lengthy.
Of course. Sprinkler system.
Is there something in our folder on that? I don't see anything.
I don't know if there'll be anything in your folder for it. I can certainly share with you what I have for information, um, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, for the past, I don't know, my time, I'll use my time as athletic director. Um, I've received numerous, um, feedback from parents in the community, referees, um, that come to Granby Junior Senior High School, athletes, you name it. I've heard it, um, about the need to fix the fields in the back of the school. Um, for, you know, we do the best that we can. I've gone with treating the fields, um, with an organic mix because we're pretty limited with what we can do back there. And I don't expect the community to know what we have going on back there, but we have wells and we have test sites and we have a lot of things that we can't put on the fields. Um, currently, right now, we have a sprinkler system on the baseball, varsity baseball field as well as varsity main field, which is the one that has that gravel, um, track around it. So the, the proposal that we have, that we got from PJ, um, for those of you who don't know, I'm Peter Gay. Um, we have a proposal with several community members looking to update and replace, um, our current sprinkler system. So I would say update our, Adam, help me out with this thing and the pump is, help me out with the words here, that thing in the little building.
Yeah, so essentially there's a, there's a, a water source in the way back of the school that is naturally fed through rain, um, that we pull water from and then use to sprinkle, sprinkle. Use the water the fields. What, um, Ally's been working on and has gotten done is, um, like she said, a couple companies, community members to put all new piping, essentially, um, ditch that system and put a whole new system in for us at a relatively, um, cheap cost, um, which would significantly enhance, um, watering those fields in the back. So that's what, that's what Ally's proposal.
Yeah, it's pretty incredible. Um, we have, the proposals include, like I said, community members, you know, people that have graduated from Granby Junior Senior High School, which is even cooler, um, that they are going to be volunteering their time, right? And excavating and putting, like Adam said, new piping in and making, you know, bringing the sprinkler system up to par to a point where it will run, you know, by an app on a phone. So we, it is long overdue. You know, I watched the athletes out there on the field, um, running through dirt. And again, we're really limited with what we can do. The town has a lot of control over the fields in the back to a point where nothing organic is going to help our fields. Okay, and we need loom brought in, we, there doesn't make any sense, I'm not the, I don't know all the basics about having a green lawn, you know, but I can tell you that we have dirt and we try to plant seed and grow grass and it does. And it looks great for four weeks. And then we play, you know, a few games on it and it's dirt again. So this proposal that we have, you know, um, and plan to fund can, we can break ground as early as March. Well, we're in March, well, as early as this month and get it going. It's, again, it's long overdue and our athletes deserve it and the community deserves a nice place to play. You know, we have a great sports program and one of the worst fields.
So is there, is there a cost to us or is it something that's, you know, essentially you, you can, uh, wow? Is there an additional cost to us or is it within your budget that you have already?
It's within our budget I have right now. And we're, like I said, the, you know, we're getting a lot of labor for free. And it's pretty incredible that PJ and his team have come up with this. And I'm so grateful, it, like I said, Jen, it's long overdue, so.
Well, I know, I, 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 I watched my first year games back there.
Yeah, when we talk field improvements, you know, this is the first step. And, you know, we did receive a quote for, you know, the second field and it's long overdue. And we want to see this happen and we want people to, you know, come to Granby to, and be excited about playing, not come to Granby and worry about spraining their ankles.
It's, so what do you need from us? Do you need a vote from us or do we need, as, I mean, what, what is it that you're, you're wanting from us for tonight?
Blessing. Your blessing, your, the green light, your support, you know? Um, because again, it's not something that we can put a Band-Aid on. Um, you know, I think we're all tired of Band-Aids and our athletes deserve and are all of our community members. We have parents that walk that track, we have parents out in the back, everybody deserves a better place. You know, and I will tell you, a lot of the people that maintain Brown Ellison are the same people that would be, you know, doing the work here.
Excellent.
So we're getting it in town, which is really cool.
Yeah. Is there, um, any other questions?
Right, yeah, so, so at this point, this would be no extra to the budget of anything?
No.
No.
It's within her.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, fortunately due to the pandemic, we've had, you know, Ally's, uh, seen some savings, so we can, we can use those to, but like she said, it's the first phase. Um, we can't do much work out there unless we have a reliable water source to, to, um, help these fields, you know?
So then I guess what, and I, first of all, thank you so much to the people that are willing to, you know, take this on. I feel like that should definitely be noted and said, um, but then also, so going forward, are there going to be additional expenses, obviously maintaining a field?
Yeah, so, so Ally
I'm just curious what the mushroom effect adds.
Yeah, so Ally and her budget on a yearly basis has what she's, was referring to, you know, um, seeding organically, whatever that is. So that's a constant in her budget.
Yeah.
This will help us out.
Right, rather than seeding pointlessly and not being able to
Yeah, like, like she said, it doesn't last, it lasts for four weeks and then it turns into essentially a parking lot out there. Um, so I, I can see your concern, are we just throwing, essentially throwing money away? But, um, this is the first step in hopefully putting some type of plan together back there. Um, we want to do fences for the baseball fields, for the softball fields. Um, we want to do something Ally said that'll attract, you know, um, resident teams to come play here, outside town teams to come play here, generate some revenue for us. You know, we got, we have a, we have a, um, a pretty extensive plan. Yeah, we have a pretty extensive plan, but this is the first step. Um, and we can cover it this year. Um, and when we want to go to the next phases, obviously, you know, Ally and I will come before you guys and give you all the details.
Right, but obviously they can't break ground without our approval. So I'm going to make the motion.
Can I actually ask one other, no, I have one other question. Um, I think it's amazing that this is even being brought up to us, so thank you for everyone who's making this happen. It's lovely, needed and super appreciated. My question is, um, would this be like an energy efficient system? Is that something that we can kind of move towards our green?
So that's a good question and, um, maybe after you guys approve it, um, me and Ally can get together with a couple of the people, companies that are going to be doing this to get those details. I, I don't know, um, but we can certainly get that information.
Awesome, I just think it could be an opportunity to, um, add on to, you know, our, our green community.
So would your collection be the same?
What's that, I'm sorry?
Water collection?
Yeah, it's naturally fed, so it's all, it's, it's all the way in the back, it feels, so it's, it's naturally fed, so.
Right, I was, I meant more of like just the, like whatever, um, they're installing, just because, you know, I know that every penny counts towards that green, you know?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, so that's a town thing though, the green, I mean, we fall under it, but it's a town thing. So it's separate from the town, but we can
Right, but I thought that like we did, we have gotten some grants from it, from being, um, part of, right, like
The green community, yeah.
Yeah, so just, you know, it just seems like a win-win to look into, that'd be great.
We can certainly do that.
Okay, so Audrey made the motion.
I will make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Uh, any final questions? I'm developing a stutter. Oh, Lord, okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, thanks very much Ally for bringing this forward and thanks very much to, uh, PJ and, um, the other people that he has. This is amazing and, um, I can't wait to see what kind of goods that they get out there.
Hope you guys are moving that up because
No problem. You don't think this next topic's going to go quick?
Am I?
Okay. Are you setting me up?
Yep.
So the next thing that's going to have people excited, um, is You guys are both setting me up. School choice. Yee-haw.
So Alex, I need you, because I can't do this at the same time, I need you to let, um, Bill share his screen.
Uh, maybe Bill'll have to make sure I gave that permission. Bill should be able to share it.
Okay. So I, before, before I have Bill share his screen, um, there's really some misconception about school choice in this district. And school choice has allowed this district to keep small class size. Because when your numbers went over, you want small numbers in your, in your early, um, early grades. You know, it's the philosophy of this district. When I came here, we taught, if, all I hear is about our small class size, that we're able to meet the needs of our students. And how you've been able to do that is when you end up with 25 kindergarteners, you open up seats for school choice to pay to, for a third teacher. And so it has benefited the district in that way. You've been able to have those small class sizes and not have kindergartens or first grades with 25 students in it. So when people, you know, like right now, you say school choice, people get, they get anxious about it. But I, I, I'm hoping that you will see that it, it has been a benefit for this district and has provided you an opportunity to keep those small class sizes. Because by bringing in 10 more kids, you're able to fund a teacher for that other class.
I, I think just to, while you're, because it's in my mind and I can't help it, but the other part that we have to remember is that unfortunately for Granby, we need school choice because we underfund our schools as a town. And that's really the end of the, of the, of the story right there.
Right.
Um, you know, yes, the state has a certain amount that it says that we need to put in, um, but every town puts in extra, it, it's part of it. Uh, we should be able to use school choice towards the extras, towards other things, but we're using it towards operations because we are underfunding our schools.
Case in point would be the sprinkler system for the athletic field, you should be able to go to school choice and not have any second thoughts about it. But like you said, I'm glad you brought it up now, it'll, it'll be brought up.
Because that is, and then that's, hopefully while we still have some attention captured potentially, that I hope people are hearing this because that is the true
So my, my thing, I just, perspective of coming from a finance side, these are not guaranteed revenue. So we should never be using it for the operations of school because they are not a guaranteed revenue. This type of revenue should be used for basically beautifying the school, using it for athletics because athletics are not academics, those are outside of academics, but they are part of the school system. So like, we want to upgrade the fencing, we want to do the fields, what, this is what school choice funding should be used for. It should not be used in the, um, relied on for the operations of school. It, it just shouldn't.
Right, and I was even going to mention, um, what Carol said about, you know, it can pay for that teacher. Honestly, it shouldn't even be paying for that third teacher, it should be going into these extras. So that even in your own explanation was like kind of a cringe point because it shouldn't be going to pay a teacher that is operational. It should be going towards those extras. And we also just need to be mindful that we are still trying to figure out our own spacing within East Meadow. That is an elephant in the room that still needs to be addressed and that this, I hope, is no attack on, um, school choice families. Like we want, I love that people want to come to Granby, we want to embrace them in our community. We need to make sure that we have the room for them. Um, but like, it is frustrating while people are here. I know that we, was it already last winter, we had, um, Tracy Novak come and do a presentation, um, on funding that's still on the website, I believe. And it showed our school funding compared to many, many surrounding towns, including bigger municipalities. And we are the second lowest funded in our, our area. The only one under us is Holyoke, who is funded by the state. So that really does tell you something in itself and is another, you know, thing like Audrey said, while people are listening, I hope that they realize like that's, it's a big problem within our community that we need to, you know, work to fix.
So it is, it is a big problem.
Before the reduction.
But, yeah, so, so here's the thing, so it, it's the evil that we're living with. I mean, it's some, it would be great if we can snap our fingers and make this go away. But this is the way that the people well above us, our pay grade, have decided that we're doing things. So right now, we need to figure out how to make this work, how to make it work within the size of our building. How to make it work to keep people happy. I mean, we've got a big gap, I think you said we're up to possibly 28, um, we're missing up to 28 and discussions that we had, but I think your presentation shows 20. And I, um, you know, I spent some time looking at it, but we can't, we can't just say, oh, well, this is what we want to use the school, school choice money for, this is how we want to do it. Fact is, right now, what we use the school choice money for is to run the school. And like Audrey said, and Stephanie has said, um, and Jen has said it previously, and Jill, I'm sure you'll say it. We need to make sure, however we work the school choice, so I'm talking like with a split tongue right now, but we, we have to be super careful that we don't put ourselves in the same position that we just went through. Um, I know Carol, that we've talked about the, the whole sixth grade transition, um, and that's still very fresh in everyone's minds. So I feel like, yep. Um, I move my boundaries. Um, and I hate that we even have to frame it like that, like we should be able to have conversations, so, um, I don't know, I mean, I, I
Yeah. Well, Bill's going to share his screen and, um, so that we can, we can go through this.
Great.
So
Great, great, great.
Did you give Bill permission to share?
Yep, I'll give him the permission to share.
It's in the folder though, we could look at it on your
I didn't see it.
Yeah, it's in the folder. So basically what we, we did is, um, we're looking at current 2021 enrollment and we're including students who have left, um, the district. Because, um, one of the big things that many of you were concerned about was how are we going to identify school's choice seats if we have residents who, um, new withdrawals is what they're deemed on this chart, new withdrawals, who left this year because of the changes in our structure. So when, you have a question already, Audrey?
Yes, because the new withdrawal is the first one after the yellow column, correct? New withdrawn for choice out?
Yep.
Choice out or new withdrawn for homeschool?
No, so you have, you have all the categories.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you.
So we looked at all of this in making, making the decisions. We didn't just look at residents and non-residents.
They can see this, right? People on the Zoom can see it.
Yes.
I just had a, I just had a brain fart and I was like, oh gosh, they're not, they're not seeing this we're talking about and they can't see it.
So Bill, if you can go to the next screen. Next slide. So this lets you know where they're going.
Okay.
So where, you know, where are our, our students from Granby that have, have left and gone, um, elsewhere? And this is, um, this screen is focusing on school choice.
Is that from just this year?
This is all of, this is all of them.
Of what?
This year and previous school choice out.
Any, any choice out ever, this year and previous. So you have currently 60 students that leave the district for school choice.
Now, do we recall what it was last year? I'm just curious for that.
It's coming up in the trending.
I already did look at the
Next, next screen Bill. This is the number currently of students Next, next screen, Bill. This is the number currently of students going to charter schools, which also we have to fund. So we're, we're putting money out for sixty kids to go to other districts, and we have twenty-two, um, that are going to, to charter schools. As we're talking about trending, the next slide shows you, so we have, and I gotta pull my net so I can see it. So you have, um, resident twenty
and Pathfinder?
So, no, because those, when they go to vocational and Pathfinder, they withdraw from here. But, but it's paid by the town. It's not, um, yeah, we have a, you know, a compact with them. Yes, okay. So, in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we had six hundred and five residents. We had one nineteen, um, school choice, um, in. We had sixty-six school choice out and seventeen charter. This school year, you can see our in-school, our, our resident enrollment has dropped. It's down, down to five seventy-five. Our out, our, uh, our school choice in is at one oh nine, which is also a drop. And then we have, still have sixty and twenty-two students that are, went, um, out. This year, we're predicting enrollment at, this is terrible, probably can't read it. I think it says five.
And if you download it, you can zoom your screen bigger and smaller.
It should be in your fold, in the folder that you, you can see anyway, so you don't, you don't have to look at this one, you should be able to look at the one.
No, I've got it in front of me, but it's colored, so that's why I can't read it. But I think it's five sixty-one?
Eighty-one.
Five eighty-one?
One oh one.
One oh one?
Fifty.
Fifty and twenty-seven. So, as you can see, we're, we're shrinking. Um, and therefore, our, our, our revenue is shrinking as well. Bill, can you go to the next slide, the financial impact? So, as, as everybody said, um, Granby does fund their operating budget using school choice. And so, currently, on school choice, we have ten teachers and four custodians at a cost of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Our projected revenue, based on the information we have currently, um, for the returning school choice students, is six hundred and six thousand dollars. And, basically, what we have a deficit of a hundred and nineteen, a hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and two. So, the payments that are going out are around six hundred and sixty thousand dollars to charter and school choice. And, basically, minimum number of school's choice seats that we need to bring in is twenty.
So the only way that we pay for these ten teachers out of the school choice money?
Yeah, essentially, yeah. And, and, and we, not we really shouldn't be, but best practice would also not to be paying custodians out of school choice. Right, they, they should be part of our, our operating budget, um, because our operating budget is eighty-five, ninety percent salary and fifteen, ten, fifteen percent of, I'm gonna say discretionary funds. Um, you know, when we see a reduction in revenue, um, aside from cutting small things here and there, it really can impact the classroom. Now, we've been able to maintain it for the last few years. Um, but with, um, you know, continued reduction in funding, um, from the town, we saw some decrease in chapter seventy this year. If we don't, um, sustain school choice and accept just that minimum number, um, to keep us level funded, essentially, you know, it might turn into, to cutting staff. And that's, that's, unfortunately, we don't wanna say it, and nobody wants to hear it, but that's the, um, unfortunately, that's the consequence when we use the school choice to, um, help fund our operating budget. We, we have no other choices.
And with the number of stu, it's not like we can say, then we're not gonna do school choice. You, you don't really have, you know, kids leave, and the money goes with them. So, either way, you would have to balance that six hundred thousand dollars of, that's left, you have, you know, you somehow have to put it back in.
So I don't know if I'm not reading this right, but, um, is there, um, how many kids school choice out just this year because of the pandemic?
No, no, no. This is, you have sixty students, you know, new this year, if we, if we continue on, new this year, um, you had new homeschooled. So if you, you go to the last page, we'll skip the page where we identified. So you have new withdrawn for homeschooling. Across the, all grades, you had eleven. New withdrawals to private schools, you had fifteen. New withdrawals to school choice out was eight. So.
So those are more concerning to me than some of the other numbers, rather than that we lost twenty school choice students, is that we've lost more than that. We've lost thirty-something students.
Right, and that's why I'm saying, we're saying minimally we need twenty, but in actuality, but, I, you know, so if we go back a screen, how did we determine how many seats we actually have here? We included, in the numbers that you see there, where we say resident, non-resident, grand total, we included all of these numbers.
The withdrawals?
The withdrawals, in, before identifying the number of seats. Because we were, were hoping that many of these, that they left because of the changes in our structure, educational structure, that they'll be returning. Okay, so, you know, that was one of the things everyone was concerned about. You know, like, what if those people come back and then you filled their seats? So we specifically did it using these numbers, so that we weren't overfilling. Um, to talk about, you know, the elephant in the room of capacity. So if you look at fifth grade, so fifth grade has thirteen with an asterisk next to it. To maintain all of the grades here in the building, our proposal for this coming school year would be to have two fifth grades. We currently have three fifth grades. The fifth grade will move up to sixth grade, and that third teacher would go to sixth grade, leaving two fifth grade teachers. Eventually, if you look at the numbers, when third grade makes their move to the next grade and hits fifth grade, you're not gonna be able to not do something, okay? Right now, we're able to do, you probably could do, if no new residents move in, two years of, of, um, what's it called, flipping, not flipping, what's the word?
Rotating?
Going back and forth. Teachers do it.
Looping, looping.
Looping. You could have two years of looping. But once that third grade class gets up to fifth grade, you're not gonna be, you know, you're, all the numbers following behind are high. And so, my recommendation to the committee is that you need to pull together a, a committee to look at this long-term on how you want, you know, to address this. But you'll have two years of looping, as long as you don't have an influx.
You suggesting that the kids will actually loop with their teacher at that traditional, or you're just saying two years of just.
I'm saying that right now, fifth grade has forty-four.
Yep.
Students. So you could do two classrooms this year. That, that teacher, and then the sixth grade needs, the sixth grade needs three.
And now, is this, this where it says fifth grade, is that this year's current fourth graders? And we're projecting that next year, there'll be fifth graders?
Yep. Yep. So everything moved up. But we used, if you look again on the last page, we used all of these numbers to make that the number of seats. Bill, you gotta go back again.
Yeah, see, I'm confused with that math. I feel like I'm looking at something incorrectly.
So.
So if all return, because we did lose a significant amount of students.
Okay, so if, if, if you look at the last page.
Yep.
Okay. If all first grade, so return, you would have fifty-six students. So we're recommending four seats. There's no guarantee that these twelve students are all gonna come back. Okay, you have non-resident, school choice, I'm not, I mean, you have withdrawal, school choice out, and you have private school. So cautiously, we're saying four.
So this is the second to last chart, not the very last.
So, so the chart, though, you just said, it, it's cautiously, because so.
Not fifty-six.
We're leaving, we're leaving room for those residents, re, residents that left to return.
Right.
I don't wanna take a seat away from the chance of opening up a seat when the, any of those parents that left this year may want to come back.
Have we surveyed the students who left this year about that year?
We have not done that yet. Um, I would, you know.
I, yeah. I'm with you. I can understand why we wouldn't right now, like, let's.
Right, I, you know, I wasn't going to do this ahead of.
Right, exactly.
Of getting, talking with you.
Right.
I, I mean, that, you know, depending on how we end up this evening, you know, we may do that, because if they aren't returning, you know, then we open another seat.
Right, right.
You know, but in all of these, um, situations, we did it where we made sure that there was room for every single one of those that left to return before adding seats.
The only question that kind of pops up in my mind, and anyone else feel free to jump in, sorry, I'm first one, is, um, so obviously with, and I'm on the second to last page, and I don't know if that's, am I looking at the right?
It's the one on the board?
Mm-hmm. I believe so.
Yep.
So, when I start thinking about, okay, we've got two years, then we've gotta decide. Well, realistically, this should be starting now.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You have to put a committee together to look at this long-term.
The other thing that kind of pops into my mind too, though, is, you know, if we're being thoughtful in our planning, that instead of maxing out and adding a bunch of kids to every other grade, do you consider, okay, what could be our other grade that could potentially only be two, to keep class size small?
And those are all things that a committee should get together and look at.
But we have this choice to make today, too. So then, like, in that regard, the committee is not formed yet, so then we kinda need to be that thoughtful committee at that point of, you know, do we want four added to first grade? Like, that looks like it's the next smallest group that's in East Meadow coming up.
But you also have eight, um, a potential returning, so that's why it only says four.
But is the grand total not forty-eight, or is it the ten?
No, it's four, it's, it's, it's.
It's potentially forty-eight.
It, if with the, it's fifty-six if we count those back in, but it's only forty-eight.
Can we, this chart needs to be updated then, because thi, this, this chart here with the fifty-six does not match the grand total.
That's what I was asking before.
No, because this is current. This is current, but we are adding the seven in, but we're, no. So we're adding, we're adding the seven to the forty-eight, so you get the fifty-six. So this is if everybody returned, you would have fifty-six first graders. At which point, we up, said, okay, three classes of twenty, we would add four students because you wa, you don't want them any more than twenty. But, I mean, the, the, the reality is, I don't know how many seats we posted last year, but we didn't get revenue. You know, so you could post sixty-eight seats and get ten. You know, it's all, you know, like, um, it's all depending on whether or not there are kindergartners out there that wanna come here, you know, or first graders or second graders.
And when I look at it, though, I think, okay, the potential of none of those first graders coming back, I'd rather almost not add those four school choice in there and see what happens and play the game, and we can always add in later if we needed to.
Right, I mean, that, that's.
Right, it almost gives you like a reserve of like, this is your, our one small grade. But if we have to potentially go to two, this would be the cluster.
So you don't have to, so, in order to do this this year, we have one classroom available. We have a reduced number of preschool this year. So, um, we're, we're going to rotate the rooms so that there is another room.
For what grade level?
So, it would be, it would, um, it would be for the sixth grade. Because right now, we're using one of the special ed rooms for a classroom. And it can only fit, I believe, fifteen on a, on a regular, you know, it's, it's a smaller class, twelve kids. And so, that classroom would now go back to being a special ed classroom, and we would have a full-size classroom for this year. Because right now, the numbers for preschool are, I think we can, we can make it the year.
For next year, you're saying, for this twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two. The following year, we're gonna have to revisit pre-K because I think we're gonna have some more three-year-olds at that, that year. But right now, we, we can do it.
Okay, I was gonna say, all of that being said, I'm not saying that we don't need to revisit, and we can just try to keep tweaking numbers here and there. I realize that this is something we really do need to look into. I, I wanna be transparent with that. Um, but I'm just trying to give us, you know, it is something that a committee would need to be formed sooner rather than later.
Yep, no, totally, totally agree.
The other thing, and then again.
Oh, Bill's trying to say something.
Yeah, just real quick, just to clarify, those seven seats coming back to first grade are more than likely going to happen, just so you know. Those are seven seats that are coming from children first. Kindergartners who attended children's first this year, that are, that are slated to come back here, you know, on this next page. So that's how we know that we're gonna be closer to that fifty-six number than we are at the forty-eight number. So, this number is not gonna stay forty-eight. Um, Audrey, I think it was you that was saying that's our next smallest. It, it's, it's a given that that's gonna go up. Those seven kids are, are slated to come back here, you know?
Okay, that, that just concerns me a bit, because then I feel like the chart that we're kind of trying to make decisions off of, with how many school choice seats are available, may not actually be.
No, that's the fifty, that's the fifty-six on the next one. It's the fifty-six on the next page.
Yeah, but the seats available isn't.
Correct.
It's on the wrong slide.
Or should be also on this slide, I agree.
Well, it says school choice in.
No, but it's not the proposed amount that they're adding, or add to your grand total, what's already there.
That's school choice in of what, of what currently is coming in. It's not what we're adding.
Right, so you have, you have that, those same first two columns are choice in and residence, just like it was at the very beginning. Okay, it's the, it's the same column.
Right, but I feel like I'm on that, okay, look at that very last slide. If all return grand total, I wish there was a proposed right there next to it, and then what are new grand total?
All right, hold on one second. Stacy's gonna. Hold on one second, Stacy's gonna try to add that column for you.
Perfect, cause now that, because then do we really, if, like, Phil had just said, those seven potential are looking to come back and it's fifty-six.
We were looking at class sizes of, of twenty. So potentially, if, if we're, we were saying, so if the seven don't. All seven don't come back and one doesn't come back, you know, then. We're gonna say no more than four, cause four would put twenty, 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 is how we looked at it.
Right, but.
But as I said, I mean, we're, I'm presenting this to you as for, you know, you to decide. You know, how many seats would you like us to open in each grade? And you may say some grades you don't want us to open in.
But I also thought that the class size was a smidge larger. I thought it was like twenty-three.
No, so for kindergarten, first and second grade, it's been under twenty. So that twenty is, twenty has been.
It's contractually, like, agreed upon, I know.
No, it's not, it's a philosophy.
I know.
Yeah, that when I came here, it was that, that was the thing. Oh, no, we just went over, we, you know, like.
Oh, yeah, my, my oldest had twenty-five in her kindergarten class.
You know, and so they said, we didn't wanna do this anymore, you know, so that's why we, I have it focused on twenty, twenty, twenty.
But that also doesn't leave us much room for um, residents moving to town. Which like last year, if you looked at the numbers, we had a significant amount right in August that came in and threw a lot of our numbers.
Well, that's your, that's your second grade, I think.
That's our tricky part too, is adding that.
Third grade on this chart, yeah.
But that's also something we're gonna have to plan for going forward, because at some point, this building can only hold so many kids. And there is building going on in town, there's no death, you know, if and or buts about that, so that some point, we're gonna hit this, this. Part where we're really gonna also have to consider that as well, is, you know, twenty'd be great. Do you know how many times I've had twenty kids in fifteen years? Uh, once, you know what I mean? And not to say that I, I absolutely think that small classes are important, I do. But we also have to feel and think about realistically of, you know, and again, committee-based, not just my thoughts and opinions, like, I'm not trying to. You know, but look at the big picture of, of what is our goal.
That, that's, yeah, and that's why I said, you know. You need to pull together and decide. I mean, you also need to get the town to fund your schools a little better. You know, I mean.
That's a whole separate conversation.
Yeah, right, so we can control here.
So I would go, um, so anyway, if you, you know, we look at kindergarten and.
So are we in kindergarten, it's just the projected also, sorry?
It's a projected, so I, you know, I don't know if, if there has the, you know, it's a, it's an estimate. Of, it's been around fifty. So, um, Bill, I don't know if you have a, a current number right now.
Yeah, so the census that we're basing it off of, that we do every year, there's forty-six students. On the census for, for incoming kindergarten, and then we usually pick up, you know, five or six somewhere in there. Over the summer. Um, and if not to say all forty-six come, you know, that, that rolls, right? We might get forty-two out of the census numbers, but then there's people that aren't on the census that, that come in too, so. But when we've gotten around that, it's been right around fifty. Cause don't forget, that forty-four that you're looking at there for first grade was actually fifty-six for kindergarten. But some of them went to children first, and that might, the same thing might happen here. Um, we've talked to Donna and we've taken off a couple that we know are going to children first already. Stacy said that if I. If I exit out. I think she added it, I'm not sure.
I think I just finally figured it out anyway. So we, the goal is every grade level to be at sixty, that's how you.
That's what we based it on.
Because now I'm like comparing the charts, it just, yeah, I can see there was that little confusion of how that equaled the state.
Here's, here's the numbers, she put it onto this slide for you.
Yeah, that makes sense, it just required me to do a little math. Not feeling it right now, but I got it. Okay. So we're eating for sixty.
So the fifth grade one should be zero, because that's the grade that we're.
Wait, did she just update?
Yeah, she put the line next to it.
Now I gotta, is it updated in our folder or we just?
No, 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 it's just on, just on here. So she added.
Send it to us.
Yeah, I'm sure.
She added the, moved the column over.
She put this column in here.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you. But that thirteen in grade five.
That was only if you were gonna go with three classrooms.
But we don't have the room in the building to go with.
Correct, so that's why I, that's why they were, there was two asterisks next to it to say. Zero openings if only two classrooms.
And are we projecting that it will be only two classrooms because we haven't found?
So, I mean, it is the smallest group, you know, and so I, to me, it's the easiest. Um, because. They, they moved to six and then back down.
This grade also specifically did start out as only two grades in kindergarten, and then they opened up to three. So they have done it before because this has been a small class.
I mean, and the caveat becomes if someone moves in.
Well, that's it. We have to, you know, we might be revisiting this, depending if we have, you know.
We might have to have a larger class, you know, and instead of twenty, it's, you know, gonna be twenty-one, twenty, twenty, or whatever.
So that, in the upper grades, yeah. You can go up to, you know, to twenty-five.
Right.
So anyway, we projected ten for kindergarten, four for first, three for second. Six for four. Two for sixth grade, and then seven through twelve, you have seventh grade, the high school, um. Grand Virginia Senior High School, Steven is saying eleven, six. Um, they only take um, seven, eight, nine, and ten. They don't um, take school choice for eleven, twelve.
Why is that?
Um, I don't know, Steven, are you on there?
I don't think so.
My assumption is just you're so late in the game at.
This isn't about moving in.
Yeah, but I don't see why he wouldn't take, I mean, I know, I know of Gramby, Gramby sophomores and juniors that transferred out. This, this year, not because of COVID, just they, they left because of sports, so.
Did we find?
I don't know why.
Yeah, the, at grades eleven and twelve, I guess the remediation, I guess, to catch them up, the cost of educating them for next two years compared to what. Receiving, I would assume is, plays into it. Somebody transferring out for. You're saying someone transferred out to another district.
Yeah, I find that interesting. I think it's, I think it's courses of study too. Open it if we need the revenue.
Cause I mean, like, I, I, I know of a junior that went to South Hadley. I really think what you're, the students that you're getting transferring in as a junior or senior are looking to transfer in, um. Maybe not because.
Exactly.
And that's particular case, that's not at all, it's hundred percent based on athletic.
I was just gonna say, I know two eleventh graders that went elsewhere as well, so that's really, it's tricky to.
Well said, Jill.
I, I understand that reservation, but there are exceptions to that, like, sure. So it's really tough to just, I make it a zero when.
Just think it's a common practice in many school districts that after tenth grade. There's, there's no school choice openings. So in our choice then, we have kids that are choicing out, that are new choices out in those grades.
So that's because.
So where are these kids from?
They went to tech, I believe.
We've got, um.
Yeah, there was pretty few.
We have a twelfth.
Frontier Regional, South Hadley.
No, 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 but that was, those are all the grades, but.
No, no, it's eleven and twelve.
That's the senior, senior line.
Not just this year.
You had, you had no, you had no withdrawals for tenth, eleventh, or twelfth.
Then that chart's not right, cause I know of at least six students that have left.
No, 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 have left, we're talking this year left.
Yeah, this, I know, I know of people in the upper grades that have left this year. Ten, eleven, and I'm pretty sure senior.
They may have left last year because we had some in.
This year. Interesting.
Well. Stacy says two in eleventh.
Two eleventh graders. Two eleventh graders and there should be a sophomore.
Did they go to public? I, I, it just seems odd to.
Two in ten, two in eleventh, she's saying.
Yep, but that's not, I don't see that on here.
Well, there is.
No, there's a two, new withdrawal, two school choice, and.
But there's not the two in the eleventh for new withdrawn, choice out.
Only have, I have a homeschool eleventh.
Yeah, there isn't. Like, I know these people personally, so I know their names, and they're not, they're not reflected, and I know we've seen that number, we've seen that before, the disconnect before.
Yeah.
So I don't know, I mean.
We're getting our numbers from the state, so that's how.
Well, so, so here's the thing, I'd like, I'd like our numbers to be what our enrollment is of what we have for butts and seats. Because this is where I feel like it gets.
Okay, but here's.
It'll never, it'll never, it'll, it'll never tie out.
Yeah.
Well, that, this, Sergeant, go ahead and then I'll.
So as a parent, when I'm looking at districts. Going to school, I'm going to a state website. The state, when um, we're reporting. They're going to have the numbers and they're going to dictate what those enrollment numbers are. So when we do the October enrollment, it's at that, it's a picture in time of what it is. So what happens is, because things fluctuate all the time, this number is gonna be constantly changing.
I, I'm with you a hundred percent on that, but what I'm saying is this right here, our numbers from the state. Are not reflective of a person I know personally, like, someone that I would call a friend. Is not reflected in the withdrawn choice.
Stacy's raising her hand. She's, Stacy wants to come in, cause she says. I am, it is, it's there, I'm raising my hand. She says it's there. Okay. Welcome, Stacy.
Can you hear me? Hello, everybody. Yes, so it looks like on the first slide, it just got deleted off. If you look at the very last slide. It's there.
Yep, new withdrawn for choice.
So it looks like just when everything got moved around, the one in eleventh grade got bumped out. But the, there's two in eleven and there's two in ten.
Well, that doesn't give me a whole bunch of faith if the slide that we need is that, you know, we've, we've got stuff that's. Not right to make a decision.
Well, no, this is right. This gives you your seven sixteen. There is just one slide, I can easily put the two back in. It just got erased when we were in tweaking. This slide is exactly the same one that is on the first slide. These are the same numbers.
Stacy, did the two in eleventh grade go to public school?
For the.
Yes.
One went to South Hadley, I know. Okay, just as we were talking about typically not doing um, eleven, twelve, I was just curious what districts they went to. He is, and South Hadley's a neighboring, so that's interesting.
I, they also have Steven on the phone, uh, just to verify, cause he's on, watching it on YouTube, so he couldn't, he's not able to get online. And he verified that that two in eleventh is what that is. He said, um, you know, and the other, the other important piece of this is Stacy, this is, this is Sims data, right?
Yes, so this is the data that is gonna be sent as of March first. So as of yesterday, the new Sims opened. So all of these numbers will be reflected in the March Sims.
So these are the same numbers in the March Sims, or the March Sims are updated?
No, these will be the numbers for March Sims, so it's as of March first. So any data that you see here is what is gonna be sent to the state.
Okay.
Jen, did you have any questions for Steven while I have him on the phone?
I, I didn't have a question for Steve.
Actually, I do, um, can you ask him just his thought real quick on school choice for eleven and twelve?
Yeah, I'm sure. So Steven, one of the questions they were asking was, um, and Jill kind of answered a little bit, but you know, your answer about. Why there's no school choice in for eleven and twelve?
Well, typically, we have an open, well, I'm certainly open to it, but then, I guess the graduation requirements and things like that, sometimes. We or students end up having to jump through hoops, or they have to overload their schedule in order to get to the local requirements.
Did you catch that?
Yep, yep, I totally understand it for twelve, that makes total, I get it.
Graduation requirements from school to school.
How different are graduation requirements from school to school, Steven?
They're all local decisions, really, outside of Mass Core, and not, not everybody even really adheres to Mass Core, although we have. Um, so it's really a local decision.
See, what happens is, is we end up with a student that comes to us and we have a requirement that's higher than where they came from.
Right.
And so as Steven said, they're doubling up on classes in order to meet our graduation requirement.
Or we'll have to do that if a junior moved in, or.
Yeah, but if a, yeah, correct. Okay, can we go back to the numbers so we can see if we can come to some decision here?
Okay, hang on. All right, hang on, let me mute, so you're not getting double sound.
Sorry.
No, 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 I'm muting, I'm, I'm. I've lost my.
Oh, yeah. We're not in the right page.
So if we vote for this, is it possible to just keep it so that our numbers would not exceed what's? Like, we're talking about these numbers fluctuating, like, I would just be concerned, like, say, there was one year we had like. Six kids come in in August in one grade level.
No, I'm here and. The guy for kindergarten, one for, for, you know, like.
Well, we can more of that overall sixty number. Like, I don't know, is that a possibility? Anything's possible, however we want to do it, we just have to decide how we want to do it.
Because then what we do is, we have to notify, can I borrow your pen? If they're gonna give me a number, I'm writing it down.
Long time to add it up.
One, one more thing, I just asked Steven about eleventh grade, and he said that because the numbers are high there too. Is why, because you see, that's, that's, they're higher there, um, this year for eleven and twelve also, you know, that, that's one of the reasons why they didn't. Have choices in for.
They already have ten school choice.
So in, in the total number, in the total enrollment, so.
But in the high school, it is a little bit different, right? We've gone around and around about that, um, before, because it's not, they're not sitting necessarily with. Only people in their grade, they're sitting, you know, they could be sitting for, um, what are those classes called, the ones they get to choose? You know, like the electives or whatever their schedule.
All right, so it's.
You know, so it's. There, there's room, so, I mean, I understand, we're probably not gonna get, um, get them. I just feel like if we need the school choice so much, then we should be.
Well, but even still, seventh is not up to sixty. Eighth is not up to sixty.
Yeah, so it's like weird.
Like, none of those are.
Well, here's the thing, it is when you're going, um, so in sixth grade.
All right.
Are losing because they're going to private schools. And then in, from eighth to ninth grade, you can start losing because now kids, students are going to vocational.
No, but what she's saying is that we should open up the number of seats to make the class to sixty in the spots, so.
It could, I mean, we're doing it based on this year, and we're seeing six. But say we have like other students move out or going to vocational in that grade, that could open up even more.
Well, and Steven wants to keep open in case, said they get some students that move in. Because, you know, the last couple of years, there's been students moving in. Um, so he also wants to keep that in mind over in that column, you know, if, if they get, if we get residents moving into town.
We didn't do that in any of East Meadows, too. We got them all maxed out to six.
Right, that's, that should be a conscious.
No, we have zero for the sixty. No, we have zero for the sixty-seven group.
I said, we brought them all up to their sixty. We didn't leave any room for any that moved up.
Well, no, you have, we have the, the withdrawals.
Other people moving into town, Carol, is what I'm saying.
No, no, I'm saying, but we, we included all of the withdrawals out of.
I get it, I'm.
I'm looking at the if all return and then proposed seats at the high school, they left room for like Jill, Jen saying for people to potentially move in, but we did not do that in East Meadow.
So how many kindergartners? It's like thirty-seven. How many kindergartners?
Good to go. I know, I gotta go home and finish my stuff for tomorrow. Yeah, so I mean, how many do we want to leave as a potential then? And again, I understand that this is all like if all return, if whatever else do we want to.
We will revisit it as we, once we put out that we have seats, we'll know how many applicants we have. We will, we will survey the people that left to find out if any are returning. You know, but, and, and come back. We may come back to you and say, you know, we have, you know, we said six kindergarten and, you know, um, we, we've um, found out that we're only going to have so many and this is, you know, we can come back and we can always tweak it. Once you put it out, people will apply and then we'll decide, you know, whether or not we have more seats or less seats.
So basically, sort of what we did um, last year, we haven't changed it. We can say right now, this is what we want it to be, based on how students move between the grades each, each year. So like last year, we can change this like we did last year.
I know, but I don't want to be reactive. I'd rather be proactive.
But the problem is, is we're, we're not being proactive based on the budget. If we limit, um, if we really, really restrict and we don't get the required, we, this is projected.
Right.
So this isn't guaranteed.
Right.
So we can have all these openings and, and kindergarten, they may say, well, I don't want to go there, so we get two students instead of ten.
Right, but are you getting paid? Do we say, let's go with eight instead of ten to leave a potential two seats? And then if somebody else comes up, okay, we'll consider it then, you know?
I know personally for me, rather than going number by, our grade by grade, I would be willing to just look at keeping the grand total at sixty in every grade, K through twelve. So whether that means tomorrow we lost another child, that would bump up another school choice seat, rather than having to come back and forth.
But I, but the problem is you have some where you can't take any, so when.
Is more than sixty.
Then we just, it's a zero.
So like grade three, we're not taking any.
Correct.
Because that includes any, any with, any withdrawals potentially coming back, right? So that's what that number means. But like she's saying, um, and we wouldn't take any seniors because they're at sixty-six. But we'd be able to take one junior because that's, brings the round number to sixty. We could take fourteen in grade seven to bring the number to fifty.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so we could take nine in grade ten.
If that's how you want to do it, well, that's how we'll do it.
It actually opens up more spots than what we're looking at right now in certain grade levels.
I'm also, I'm also not opposed to keeping it sort of like a tiered approach. Use what they've got here and then they can come to us if there's anything that goes above that, that brings it up to the sixty.
Perfect, perfect.
Does that make sense? Like a tiered approach, like we're going to use this as the guide to open this number of seats? And then anything that goes over this suggested number of seats would, they would have to come to us, but the lower grades, it's not gonna, because they're already up to that sixty.
Number, I would just not have any reservations personally, if we did have another, you know, four students in grade eight or like, I wouldn't even think to come to us to go over because right now they're only at, you know, grade eight, for example, that's fifty-seven. So if they had three more, like, that would be totally fine. That they wouldn't have to come to us because some of the high school is projected, is being, it looks like it's a much more reserved.
Yeah, because they're.
Grade seven is forty-six and taking an eleven, so it's fifty, I mean, it's a much more reserved number in the high school. So, and I would not want to limit anyone who wants to join our high school community. Yeah, and I mean, I would just say that I feel like these numbers were put out there for a reason and with thought. And if we are not opposed to what the numbers look like to begin with, um, then, you know, obviously Steven put the numbers out in the high school the way he did with reason and same with Phil. Um, and if we're not opposed to the numbers as they stand, then I for one am kind of okay with moving forward with them as they are. And then if there needs to be changes to them, then that's when we're requesting that that information come to us.
Yeah, I guess my only reservation is I feel funky about feeling like one building is being more reserved for growth and one isn't, if we're not, it's like not an apples to apples.
But I, I don't think you can look at it in terms of apples to apples when you're looking at elementary or primary and secondary. And historically, what school choice looks like.
Right, but then in that, if you're talking historically, we should be more reserved, it should, would actually be the other way around.
I just mean with what.
Who actually shows up.
Correct.
I, I, I'll tell you, it gives me a huge wrench in my gut because I really don't want to have to have another conversation about um, space next, next week, you know, or a month from now.
Well, I think that's.
But it needs to happen. It's gonna have to happen.
Right.
And I, I, I'm one hundred percent, but um, it's gonna be we're gonna open stuff up and it's gonna be a surprise when, and we're gonna have no room for people again.
So that's my only question that I am interested to hear, is should we be thoughtful with another potential grade of not taking on all of the school choice seats for that reason? Like keeping one grade specifically, other than the fifth grade that has zero, is there another grade that we should consider that like potentially could mindfully be smaller or do we just go with it? Well, did you not talk about the pre-K or was that?
But that's only for two years.
But in that time, is the committee.
You're gonna put a committee together and make a determination on how you're gonna address this.
So pre-K definitely going to one class for the next.
Pre-K is, is going to one class. If we end up with any, then we may have to be creative. Partner with the library maybe, or, you know, think of.
That's my concern though, is then.
Right now, the, the preschool, you have to remember preschool is focused on students with disabilities. Okay, that's why we have preschool. We have an integrated preschool because students with disabilities can't get into regular preschool because they have needs. So districts are responsible for providing an opportunity for them. Those students come from early intervention where they've had special services beforehand. The numbers we have for the district for early intervention are lower this year. So even, I mean, we know whether, when they're going to turn three. So this year, we should be able to get by with two half sessions.
Comfortably.
Mm-hmm.
I guess that's my only concern, is just like if we go forward with this and then in, in a month now we have to be creative because
No.
more preschoolers came and then we don't have that room.
No, because it's the peers, we can only take so many peers. And we'll only take, um, you can take, have seven students with disabilities and you can have eight peers. You can also have um, eight students with disabilities and five peers, you know, you can have a smaller.
So you can kind of control the.
Can control.
The size to a point.
Right, you can't get to ten and, and, you know.
Right, it has to be a ratio.
Be.
Yeah.
I'm afraid to even ask this question, but might as well, day's been going so great. I'm wondering, do we even know what space requirements will be looking like for, I mean, like, I know there's a push to go back to school. We want to get people back in, but will, will, I mean, are we, we're projecting a hundred percent back to normal except for masks and the pop.
Typically, you're three feet apart mostly anyway from seat to seat.
But it depends on how you measure it, right? Whether it's seat middle to seat middle or seat edge to seat edge.
You know, it, it's approximately three, you know, three.
Right.
So pretty much, I, I see, everybody, there's going to be a lot of vaccination. There's going, you know, I, I, everything is opening up. I see September being, you know, back to normal.
With masks.
With masks.
So do you think that with three feet in a standard classroom at East Meadow, we can accommodate twenty?
Yep.
Is that the max we can go?
Is there a number that, I remember like in the fall when we were measuring, I thought we actually had looked at three and six.
Three, three, you could get most classrooms. But I don't think there's going to be restrictions come the fall. I think you're going to find that it's, it's mask wearing, hand washing, yes, maybe at lunch because your masks are off, you know, but I don't, I don't foresee um, it being six feet in the, in the fall. That would, not by then, you're going to have most people vaccinated.
Like I said, like, my hangup is still going forward of beyond those two years. Will we have found a solution and solved our problem in two years' time?
Well, but then we'll come back to this. Can I, and can I say too, that in two years' time, you'll also have two additional grade levels at K coming in?
That could be bigger.
It could, but we'll have two years to work on a solution or with the committee, work on a solution. And you'll have two additional grade levels coming in that could be smaller or not, we can, cannot choose to include
Right.
school choice.
So if that. If we have one grade coming in, like right now we have fifth grade, two classrooms. So by the time we get to sixth grade, the next year, we could have the kindergarten, two classrooms. So that those, but then it's a problem with teachers.
That's why you put a committee together. Okay, so we're going with the numbers, we're going with the numbers on the chart? Stephanie wants to go higher, Audrey wants to go lower.
No, I don't want to go lower in all grades. I just want to be thoughtful.
I didn't want to go higher.
You know what I mean? And, I mean, this, I can but again. I'm not like trying to say we should go lower, but I do like how Steven's thoughtfulness on that, um, but.
I also think I have to remember, this is if all return, and as I hope everyone comes back, but there are going to be those families that choose to stay in whatever avenues they did go in. So this is also, in a sense, there almost is a little reserve built in because I think it'd be really ambitious to assume that we're going to get full return.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go with um, the numbers that are here and um.
So you'll just bring it back to us.
Yeah, I mean. Apply, we're gonna tell you.
Right, well, will you tell us as people apply for any grade anyway?
Yes.
If we get uncomfortable, we start hearing that, residents are coming in, can we stop it?
We can add it and.
Updated to have like a live chart going that you can show us that future meetings.
One of the things is, you know, as we know, um, there's a ton, ton, ton of new construction in town right now, which is fantastic. But a lot of the houses that are being built look like houses for families, you know, they're, they're, you know, larger homes. So what I'm hoping is, you know, if you can keep us updated on that, we'll add it to the agenda on a rolling basis. What I'd like to see is if we also hear that, you know, it becomes on our radar, like, I don't know what the process is if someone moves into town when we find out about that, um, but just kind of keep us updating.
Pretty good about contacting us and saying, you know, my, I'm having a house built, I, I'll be coming, blah, 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 so.
So I do have a comment to make that sometimes we have school choice, but those are the families building houses in our community, so they no longer become school choice students, they're now student students. So it's just, the number doesn't change, they just swap categories.
Absolutely, yeah, I just, I kind of want to just keep a tally on it, um, like Audrey and um, Stephanie are saying, let's be mindful, let's be thoughtful and try to do it because it really gives me like a lump, like, oh.
Can we get a survey out to the families who did leave now that you have this to see what our return looks like?
It might be too soon.
I think it, no, I think it will be too soon, I think it needs to.
I'd like to hold off on the survey until we. The, the more imminent hurdle about how and when we've got full return to and if we have full return to.
So.
Because I, I don't think it makes sense to ask right now, those people left for a reason and they're gonna be like.
We'll go with the, with these numbers to be able to at least put out, put it out there so parents who are interested can apply. Um, so I need you to vote, I think you have to vote.
Someone want to make a motion? Tonight, I'm waiting for someone else.
The school choice for FY twenty-one, twenty-two school academic.
Hold on a second. Any last minute comments, questions, shots? All right, all those in favor? There you go, Carol, approved unanimously. See, I told you.
Okay.
All right, um, superintendent's report.
I, I, I got nothing.
That's really not acceptable. I have a question. Adam?
Yes, um, I don't have much either. Next week or next meeting will be um, a FY twenty-two budget presentation, um, preliminary and um, FY twenty-one budget update. So next meeting for me will be um, a lot of information, um. Other than that, we are good facilities, maintenance wise, food service wise, everything is um, so quiet. This, this meeting for me, next meeting will be, um, I'll have a lot of information to share.
I, I haven't heard back from anyone on our joint meeting request at this point. So it's out there, I mean, I think I copied everybody, right? So I did have a question for you regarding facilities and um, phasing in more students. How is the um, the plan for lunches specifically to still sir, um, prep and cook at East Meadow and then bring over to the high school?
Unfortunately, that's our only option at this point because the kitchen, the kitchen, not the cafeteria, but the kitchen at the high school, we can't use. So.
Sorry, but under whose can we not use it? Like when.
So that's based on the engineering company, the engineering firm that we hired to do the studies, not here, uh, but next door. Um, but based on ventilation, air exchanges, all of that, that we cannot be prepping food for, you know, cause contamination, we just, that, that kitchen is not, how it's set up right now is not.
And I did bring the issues out, like now we know that, like.
Absolutely.
It's, it's good timing because we had a, a call this morning, um, we're we know that hopefully, we're hopeful that next year we're back in school full time and that means we're gonna need to use that kitchen and nothing that, you know, there's nothing that's going to change whether we can use that or not unless we do some work um, in the kitchen. So we had conversations this morning.
Yep.
Um, we got that ball rolling, um, it's, it's going to be a lengthy process. We're gonna need the town's help in some capacity.
So let me ask you this then, I mean, we've been using that kitchen for a good long time.
So that's.
Um, so if the governor and commissioner Riley are pushing back on us for full return to school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, why is it then, if we're doing that, that now the kitchen is, is not acceptable?
That's a good question and, and.
Can we ask that?
Yeah, but I, I mean.
I understand it needs work, the whole freaking building.
Exceptional, I think it's an exceptional problem.
Yeah, just knowing now what we know about the virus and the lack of ventilation and air exchanges and, and just being. Like, it wouldn't be a responsible decision to, to do it, but I understand.
What the, what the issue is, is that the only vent pulling air through that is in the kitchen. So it's where the food is.
Where the food is, so it's just.
But I feel like this is a good conversation for us to be have if anyone's still living at night. But I feel like they're gonna miss it, but I'm hoping that they're still there because this is part of those things that we're looking at right now too, when we're making these decisions.
And it goes, honestly, it goes to, you know, we had parents sign up, three hundred parents sign a petition to get us back in school. We need those same three hundred parents to be on the town that we need more funding, we need the school improvements at the school, you know, we need all this. So as much passion as everyone's got, we need it when it comes to this stuff too.
Jen.
So. I know the governor said that some schools can open, there will be exceptions. Could we get a grant to um, help with that? Just because I, I know he was saying that some schools may not be able to open the way he wants them, based on the conditions of the schools.
So yeah, so based on the. So yeah, so based on the, and I, I wanna know how much we wanna share, based on the conversations we had this morning, we had, we had gotten, we had done, um, when we got the roof vents put on at the high school. There was some oversight and it should have been done then. It wasn't done. We kind of realized it too late. Um, we were hopeful that the roof project, um, even though it was late in the process, could fund us making the improvements that we needed in the cafeteria or the kitchen. It can. In the meantime, we had gotten um, some quotes for the architect and the vendors who did the roof work to come back and do a study for the cafeteria and the kitchen to see what we needed. So. Long story short, based on our meeting this morning, um, we're gonna at least get the ball rolling and have that study done. Um, it's gonna cost us a, a minimal amount of money. Um, but we won't know what we need until we have this study done, so we're gonna do that. There are some grant opportunities, we're already, I was looking at it today, there's a community project, a community facilities project grant. Um, the wording on whose eligible is kinda iffy, but I reached out to our um, like district person.
One of the stipulations about opening, it is not, because a lot of the schools in Massachusetts are really, really old.
Yeah.
So.
We were had one of the oldest until we got this one.
Yeah, but they, he did state that there will be some difficulties for schools, some schools to reopen at full capacity, and he knows that, and that's why I was asking.
Yeah, no.
But to clarify, it doesn't affect us opening at capacity, it's just really is going to be a burden on our cafeteria workers.
So the thing, for, for the rest of this year, if we were to get back April first, for the rest of this year, we, myself, Ken, we would make it work for the rest of this year, but if we're hopeful and expecting to open in full next year, we could not, we could not prep meals and serve meals at East Meadow at the same time we're doing it for the high school, just we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the capacity to do it.
Did you ever find out that magic number of how much we can spend on the high school before we have to bring everything up to code?
We don't, but that's, I mean, we could get it, but that's a, the, the town would have to assess the ba, the, the building at a certain value.
Right, it's the value.
It's a, it's a percentage of the value of the building. I don't know what that value is, I'm not sure if it's been done recently, we can, we can reach out.
I'd like to, I'd like to know that because here's the thing, we've got all of these things coming up. We, we know that the high school is a hurdle and this is one of the ways in which it's an immediate hurdle. If we need to open full, full-on, we do not have a functioning kitchen. Kitchens are not cheap, especially if we're start talking about return air and every, you know, everything else. Um, I kinda wanna have that and, you know, if, if we need to figure out who we need to ask or whatever. I just, it's, it's a number that I've been looking for for a while and I, you know, I just kinda wanna know.
So the, so the, the, to an excellent point, we've been talking about this too, because we all, we all know the future of this building is kind of just hanging out there, what, what do we do with it, right? So we're, we, we're well aware of that conversation, we've had that conversation. In terms of the kitchen, and we, again, had this conversation this morning, we're not talking about millions of dollars to upgrade it. We're talking, it's not small money, we're talking a few hundred thousand dollars.
Right, but from what I understand, and again, you know, it's a cumulative thing within a certain amount of time.
Yep.
So we've done money to the boilers, we've done money to doors, we've done what, now we've added HEPA filters, we've done all of these things.
A fraction of the cost of what that percentage, I understand what you're saying, but.
Adding machine is going nuts. And now we're gonna throw on a, a kitchen and who knows what else is going to come out of it that we, if we need to bring the high school? Because the high school's been the trouble building in, in order to bring stuff back.
It's not a full kitchen, it's just a makeup air vent.
I'm willing to bet dollars to donuts, when you get in there and you start doing something, it's gonna be.
So here's the, here's the other, here's the other part of this too, is that.
I did not mean to open this box, I'm sorry.
So, so.
You owe me a donut.
We had the conversation this morning, there were, there were some, there were some follow-up tasks that I had to do, some other people had to do before we kind of talked about this conversation, but it's out there now. So, um, the other thing to, to remember, um, is that the town has designated the high school as an emergency response shelter. Which means if there is an emergency, we need to have a functioning kitchen and all that, okay? So I, I don't know what responsibility the town has in helping us through the process, that's what we're kind of looking at. Um, so that's where we're at right now. We, we've started that conversation. Um, it, it's not a quick and easy fix, but we're, we're exploring avenues, avenues and what we can do, you know, the most we can do to, to help.
I love, I would, I would, I'm really curious, I've asked before, so now I'm specifically asking, I'd really like what the dollar's incentive it is, what that assessed value is, what our current total is up against improvements? How long we have to make that total amount of money and everything else? Because you know what? I, I feel like I'm making a decision in a vacuum, like, let's do this, let's go forward with this. But we don't really know where, we don't know, we don't know. And I feel like it's gonna be one of those triggers where it's gonna all of a sudden magically show up and we're gonna be like, oh boy, we don't know, we didn't know, now we're in a world of hurt. Because we don't have, we don't, we didn't go through capital improvements or all of this other stuff. So I'd really appreciate if we could try to make some headway on that. And it's because it's, it's become a pet peeve of mine and I'm sure I'm pouring the living daylights out of you, because I keep asking, but.
So again, you mentioned capital improvements, we had some other things submitted for capital improvements. Um, we're not sure if we can or not, but um, we're hopeful we may be able to shift what we asked for, not money-wise, but um, project-wise and say, maybe we can use the money that we requested for uh, updating the kitchen.
This.
Okay.
Again, preliminary conversations this morning.
Gotcha.
Um, but I, I think we're heading in the right direction. We're gonna do, take our first step. We're gonna pay the, I think it's twelve thousand dollars or so for the architect to come in, do the study and then we'll have more answers to know exactly what that kitchen will need to make it functional.
I love it. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
I thought that was gonna be really quick, actually.
No, no, no.
Why would you ever even think that?
Jen, uh, CES.
Well, we have a meeting at the end of this month. They're in the process of looking for a director. Goes on that, um, meeting to go to.
Oh, meetings are great. Okay, so. Is there anything else that we need to discuss that's not on the agenda? Do we wanna extend the meeting any longer?
No.
Do you wanna just tit chat for a bit?
Executive session.
Executive session. I know, I was just being, I'm being, I'm hunching now and it's eight hundred o'clock. So, alright, um, so we're now going to vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Act, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, part A, section three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining, bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Can you do the roll call, please? Bye.